Welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, June 13th, 2019. If we could all please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out tonight on this beautiful fall weather like day. I already put all my winter clothes away and I had to rummage to get them out. So, thank you all for coming out tonight. We will start off the meeting with approval of some minutes, so I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of May 23rd, 2019. Budget and Finance Subcommittee minutes of May 22nd, 2019. Budget and Finance Subcommittee minutes of May 29th, 2019. Baker-Adam Scholarship Executive Session Minutes of May 28th, 2019. And Acceptance of Warrants 48 P-19, 50 P-19, 49 V-19, and 51 V-19. So moved?
Second.
Anyone want to discuss that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm pleasantly surprised to see our new student rep here this evening. We have Olivia Billington here, so you will be, you're the Student Council President?
Yes.
Okay, great, well, welcome and thank you for coming out tonight. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself before we get into what's going on in school?
Yeah, so I'm gonna be a senior next year, I'm the new Student Council President. And, wait, a little bit about myself, or do you want me to like say?
Yeah, let's talk about you first.
Um, well, I really like doing musical theater, so that's what I do a lot. Yeah, um, I live in Georgetown, obviously. What?
Your whole life?
Um, yeah, I moved from California when I was two, so pretty much my whole life. Yep, I've always gone to Georgetown. Um, I really like performing and stuff like that, and, yeah, I'm really excited to be on the board.
Did you do the Drama Fest?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good for you. That's always exciting.
Oh, yeah, it was so fun, I loved it.
That was a great play they did. Wasn't an easy one, either.
Oh, yeah, it was really hard.
It was really hard.
That's good. Okay, so what do you want to tell us about, what's going on?
Yeah, so, we obviously had our prom on May 31st, so that was awesome. And the graduation happened, and our finals start tomorrow, and then next week will be open campus for all of high school. And then, we're starting a new thing at the school where the seniors get to paint their parking spots, which is really exciting. It's only $25 to do it, and then, on August 16th, all of the students will be at the school painting and stuff like that. So, it's gonna be a fun community event.
So, how many kids did you get that were interested in painting the spot?
Everyone who, so Maddie McClung started it, I think. It was introduced a few years ago, but we just brought it back, and more people were interested in it this year to follow through with it, so that's exciting. I think pretty much everyone who got a spot is interested in this.
That's awesome, it's gonna look really good.
Gotta personalize it, which is cool.
Yeah, so you can do like designs, or your name, the year, or your college, or something like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. I'm excited for that. So, the prom, I did hear a lot of great things about the prom, so that's good.
Yeah, it was really nice. It was my first prom going to it. It was, the venue was so pretty. It was awesome, and then like-
It was a beautiful day.
Yeah, Gloucester was like above us, I think. Yeah, so that was fun, and-
That's good. Well, great, thank you again for coming out.
You're welcome.
Um, so, yeah, I do just want to talk about the graduation for a few minutes, because the graduation was so beautiful. The day couldn't have gone any better. Mike and his crew did a great job setting up the, you know, all the chairs and the stage and all that, and I think it went without a hitch. Even the kids, like, it seemed that, last year, I know, we had a little bit of the running into each other, the kids.
Well, that had to do with the seat, the number of seats we set up was not consistent with what they practiced, so.
But this year, the kids did fabulous, and I must say, I was one of those people that was a little nervous about the children, about the students actually calling out the names, I was just a little apprehensive about it. I think it was great. I really thought it was a really nice touch. I think all the speeches were phenomenal, I know the superintendent, a lot of people were telling me after the, after the parties, they said, "We think that was the superintendent's best speech ever."
Yeah, so I should never make another one.
Well, I think it was, um-
Well, the topic was pertinent to them.
Yeah, the Disney and everything, but it was still a really great speech.
I was wearing crazy mouse ears, that won't be forgotten.
Yeah, Pam got a picture of you before you took the oath.
Well, it's in the record, too, I thought, geez, if there's no context to this, they really will wonder what was going on.
I need to go.
Yeah, I had the pink sunglasses from last year.
No, I'm glad it was really good, and I do just want to also say that the senior trip went off without a hitch. Everything was phenomenal, they were greeted at the park on Thursday after the awards ceremony, and the Kiwanis group had a wonderful display of food ready and waiting for them, and they were all so wonderful with the kids. And the venue, we changed it from Erie Four to American Legion, and it was so good over there, because you had like one group of kids over in the baseball field playing, then you had another group of kids over like by the water area. They were just spread out throughout the whole park, it was really nice. Then they went up to Maine, and they had beautiful weather up there, it was a little chilly, but they had a great time, and one of the-
Lot of mosquitoes, and lots of welts and closed eyes.
Yeah, a couple of the kids, yes, one of the girls got bitten by something. Her eye closed the day of graduation, but it was better the next day, I think, on Sunday, she was better. But the trip was great, so I just want to thank everybody out there that helped me with it, because it was a huge undertaking, and without that group of parents that helped, I don't know how it would have gone off. Especially the chaperones, so we did have six chaperones, and they said the kids were great. I did not go. No.
Made it sound like you went.
I did not go upon the request of my senior, which was, so, everything was good. And I'm sure your son had a good time?
Oh, he had a wonderful time, yeah, all smiles, all, you know, very exciting.
Good, good.
And it was great for them to have that experience, because, you know, as a family, we have not whitewater river rafted before, but I kind of would, you know, I love the idea of my children having done that.
Experience and things, too, it's all, yeah, it was, it was good. So, um, great, so we'll move on and ask anybody if they're here from the audience that wanted to talk about anything on the agenda tonight. Okay, um, so, Mike Anderson is not here, but as soon as he comes in, we'll get him out, up here. So, we will, why don't we start off with Joe Patella?
Sure.
You're here for Camp Kiev, which seems like you were just here the other day for Camp Kiev. That's good, I'm so glad that you're asking for it again.
We actually have some representatives to Kiev.
Yes, they have.
Had an audience of Kiev participants.
And I bet they'll all say it was great, actually Ryan probably went to Kiev.
I support Ryan.
That was just three years ago.
We are that old, yes.
No, that's good.
Young.
So, good, I'm glad to hear that it's going through again, which is awesome, because I love the program.
It is awesome, and we can't say enough and appreciate the school committee and superintendent's support for this program. It's, we feel that it's vital, and we appreciate the support.
Um, did you already, no, you didn't have your, did you have your parent meeting?
We had a, an initial parent meeting for the incoming sixth grader, sixth graders. And it was pretty well attended, we had about thirty-five parents there, and we will have another follow-up in late September for all the other parents who want to come out and find out more about Kiev at the school.
Good.
I think we decided to move the approval for Joe to come in the spring, because remember, it used to be like we'd come like October, and then everybody would panic, that there just was not a lot of time for the parents to plan, because we, you know, the cost of the trip is getting up around $300, so you have to, you have to plan for that.
Prices go up, and thankfully, you know, Kiev has kept their prices relatively the same, and the bus company that we've been working with for the last five, six years have definitely helped us out.
Who do you use for a bus company?
VIP Tours from Maine, they come down to Portland. And, you know, this year, we're looking at three buses going up, and hopefully just two coming back with all the parents who show up Friday for the, for the parent part, component of the program.
Good. How many kids do we have in that grade?
Well, we have a estimated 125, I believe, it's a bigger group.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
And, you know, every year, we hope for 125, or the full percentage, but we'll see.
And how about the teachers that are interested in going?
As of right now, we have at least three committed, definitely going, and, you know, we're gonna have five, six grade teachers this year because of the bigger class, so we'll see the other ones, what's gonna happen, you know, a lot of, we just have young families.
Right.
So, it's difficult for them, but, you know, I'm confident that we'll have five chaperones.
Yeah, okay.
Even if we have to drag Superintendent Jacobs up there.
I know, I keep saying, I keep saying I'm going to go up there. Guyland this year, for one of the days of the eighth, well, just with one of the eighth graders, and he loved it. He says, "I understand why everybody likes the strip."
And that's just the three days?
Yeah, he just went up for like a one day, yeah, he wanted to test it out, and he said it's just a beautiful environment out there.
Yeah, it really is pretty, and the programs are excellent, too.
Like, he said it was great.
And are they gonna keep like that steam that we talked about a couple of years ago?
Correct, yeah, they always, they're always looking for, you know, come September, they'll focus on whatever we choose for them to focus in on, and, you know, usually the hot topics, we, you know, we'll always focus on relationship, but we always work on some steam components as well, since the request came a couple of years ago, so they're awesome at doing the steam activities with the entire group. And, you know, fortunately, Mrs. McGinnis has actually been able to bring some of that back as well to the classroom and follow up with some of the stuff, so it works out really well.
Good.
Now, does this fall, the dates, does it fall on the professional?
The good old dates question, I am happy to tell you that this year, we don't lose any days, we'll be coming back, it's November 4th to the 8th, and we come back on that long weekend, which is, so we have Monday, the Veterans Day is back on a Monday, so we don't lose, we don't have any problems with dates this year.
Is it good?
It is over Election Day, though.
I hear a little voice in the back.
I think there's Election Day on the 5th, and I think-
Yeah.
But that's okay, because the teachers get, do a PD day, everybody gets paid for that day, so the teachers, these teachers are working, they're just not going to PD.
Right, we'll just, it'll just run into the-
Oh, for the kids.
They'll run into the same issue that we have this year with the kids, and the kids will get, the sixth grade will get out a day early, if they go to Kiev.
Right, well, that's better.
Right.
Yeah, well, it's better than the whole having to, you know, with an impact on the teacher.
Well, and also Kiev is, you know, so popular with other schools, you know, once you get locked into that week, you know, you're pretty much, that's it.
Right, but I think we're one of the oldest, the longest districts, right?
We are, I believe, us and Newburyport are the longest ones in Massachusetts.
And Newburyport is still keeping the tradition?
I believe they are, yeah.
Remember, it used to be March, right, so we changed it to November, so we kind of created our own situation.
Right, right.
March was freezing, for us.
It was freezing.
It was so cold.
And part of the intention was to, you know, start of the year, team building, everybody, you know, kind of gets together, you know, early in the year. That was why we actually moved it, and we wanted to avoid MCAS, because March was getting to the point where-
I bet you, these guys, did you guys go in March or November?
We went in March. There was snow on the ground.
There was snow.
Their minds are going.
Because I remember someone slipped and like sprained their ankle on the ice.
I think Ryan just said August.
That's when I went.
My kids went, at one point, it was really warm, I remember.
Yeah, I think it's the eighth graders that go when it's warmer.
Yeah, well, that's because it's, because it's- That's why, it was sixth grade, it was always cold, sixth grade was always cold.
We've been up there in knee-deep snow, sometimes in shorts and a t-shirt, depending, you know, November and March are always those tricky months.
Yeah, you have the tricky months. Yeah, and they just gotta plan accordingly.
There was a comment at some point about, a question about students needing financial support. Is that, and I know we're six months away from knowing any of that, but is that, have we figured something out? Or where?
We have, we've discussed it.
We have to see what the need is, but we know what the source of funding is, we would use.
That's all.
Oh, good, great. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Penbrook sixth grade trip to Camp Kiev as presented by Mr. Patella.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, enjoy it again.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Oh, did you all know that Joe was one of the recipients of the shining star last night?
I did, I saw his picture, congratulations.
As was Sherry, which was nice, his wife Sherry. I think it was the first time there was a couple, remember, that's what Tom said.
Right, well, Sherry didn't have to pay off anybody.
So, congratulations.
Congratulations to both of you. Very nice.
Thank you.
See you later, Joe.
All right.
Bye, Joe.
Okay, Mike Anderson?
Oh, cool. That's gotta be quick, 'cause I want these kids to get in.
Oh, I know.
Well, it's up to you, Mike, if you come out.
Sure.
You'll be quick.
I called him first, Mike, and you weren't here yet.
I know.
That's okay.
Sorry.
No worries. You'll get a pass.
Okay, Michael.
So, I don't know if you have any questions on the list.
So, let's find it. Looks like you're busy.
The question that I had was the basketball court, the light, the stuff going in behind Curly. How much of the install is coming from town money, for lack of a better word, versus, is the town, where's the labor coming from?
The town influence. Highway light and school.
The only thing our guy might do is some wiring for the lights.
Yeah.
Our electrician might do a little, you know, work with the town to make whatever connection.
Okay.
But the CPC is paying for the-
For the material, all materials.
Well, they're paying for the hard, the final hard top coat and the line.
Will the lights be regulated by someone, you know, how usually on the football field, there'll be a timer?
And who's gonna have the key to that?
And Peter Jerky's guys are doing all the-
Yeah, we'll have to roll over.
Site prep, I guess you'd call it, and then the light department's guys are doing the light holes.
It's like a good team for different departments.
Yeah, I mean, talk about the different departments coming together, yeah, which would be great.
And the labor for the paving is in that CPC money.
That's, okay.
Yeah, because we don't do that.
Okay. You get a time going on.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it's routine stuff, I mean, there actually is no huge major project, but we do have a lot of routine maintenance stuff. Something that's on the list is, we're gonna make a few moves in the preschool classroom, a few moves in the preschool classrooms, where they're eliminating one room, they're gonna turn that into a library and a cafeteria, and then we're gonna move the teacher that's in that room into the room where the teacher who's leaving is.
So, where's, which room is the library gonna go in?
Mrs. Denton's room.
So, that's the middle, I mean, go back to the old preschool.
We're feed Bonjourney ones, that on the end, it's like two doors, two doors down, two doors closer.
Library and cafeteria.
Yeah, so the kids will eat in there.
So, they can eat and then read and, like, eating and reading.
Is the, the only other question I had was the floor, the donated flooring.
Yeah.
I just noticed that wasn't on here, and I know it was planned for the spring, and then-
It's, oh, we're gonna do that over the summer.
It's gonna be in the summer, okay.
But they're sending someone out to install that.
Oh, nice, okay.
Yeah, so.
Oh, they have donated.
Yeah, yeah, it came, it was supposed to come over April vacation, but it came late.
Right.
We didn't want to interrupt.
Interrupt the school, right, yeah. Yeah, okay, oh, but they're installing it.
Yeah, they're gonna install that, yeah.
And you'll have summer help again?
Yeah, we have summer help.
That's good, how many extras do you have?
Uh, there's gonna be a couple of kids at the high school, a couple of kids at Penbrook, and one kid at Penbrook, and then two people helping out with grounds and fields.
Wow. There are a lot of things going on.
I mean, there's a lot of, like, weed whacking and stuff that happens all the time.
We have a lot of grounds.
We have a lot of grounds.
And it's hard to keep it looking neat without having that extra bodies, especially in the summer. I mean, it's been growing like crazy right now with the rain. Yeah, and then some other things that aren't on the list is, I met with Dan at the high school, and we're gonna, we're gonna paint the main office there. We're gonna kind of clean out the conference room and the guidance area, and we're gonna, if time permits, we're gonna possibly paint some of the hallways and stairways and that kind of stuff.
Keeping the same colors.
Mike, nothing, we aren't gonna do the floor treads, though, right, we gotta put that on the list somewhere.
We could do that, it just depends on-
Have to buy the material.
If we have the money for the material.
Right, you know what I'm talking, you know what I'm talking about, because there are probably five, five or six stairwells that were not part of the-
Project.
Project, but they, they really need to be-
Should be replaced, and I guys can do the work, we just have to find the money to buy the material.
Can you, Jackson, I got a couple of questions, can you speak to the trees at Penbrook?
The ones that came out? Yes, so we had, I don't wanna say the word wrong, tree arbitrator or what it can't remember.
Arbitrator.
Yeah, and he looked at the tree guy. Yeah, tree guy. He determined which trees were unsafe, and we met with conservation as well, because we, there is like a little swamp in the middle of that somewhere. And they agreed on which trees should come out, and those trees were removed.
Okay, is there a plan to do anything to replant any?
Not from them, I mean, if we wanted to come up with something, we could.
Right.
If you notice, there's like a lot of small, like hardwood trees growing now, and he said in a couple of years, those things, now that they're getting sun, are gonna really blossom, and he's like, it'll look like a whole new place. And those won't have the potential of blowing over like the pine trees, too, because we lost at least twenty pine trees since the school's been up.
And over near where the wetland is, the tree guy wants to talk to the conservation, because he still feels that there are some trees over there that are unsafe, that really should be removed.
Where is that?
In the, so if you, if you go to Penbrook, you'll notice like when you, on the front end, you know, kind of near the kindergarten lot, there's a number of trees that were taken out, but if you go down, you know, sort of to the end of the, of the parking, almost before you get to the teacher's parking lot, there's a lot of trees in there that are a little unstable. And the conservation's position has been, you know, if they fall, they fall, but you can't really mess around in that area, because it's within a buffer zone of a wetland.
Do you know where the Japanese maple is out front, have you ever noticed that?
Yeah.
So, if you're looking at it, to the left of it, between that and the teacher's parking lot is considered wetland.
Oh.
Right, so, you know, you need a variance and all kinds of things to do that, so the tree guy was-
They did take some all along the teacher's parking lot down, but they didn't get into that area. And if we do cut any of those down, the law says that they can cut them, but they have to fall into the wetland.
Naturally fall.
Yeah, so it would kind of look like a-
Like a war zone. Like a microburst went through.
On a good windy day, those trees are-
Yes, oh, yes, we've seen that.
Thanks.
All right.
All right. Do anyone else have any questions? Okay, looks good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out, and thank you for such a great job of graduation day, you and your group, you did an awesome job.
Thanks.
Glad that the sound system worked.
It worked out great.
It sounded great, and I'm sure the, the, your crew was glad that it was gonna be sunny, like, we knew plenty of days ahead of time, it wasn't like we were crossing our fingers.
And it wasn't too hot, actually.
It was perfect, it was really nice, so thank you, the grass, the grass was just so green, it was so green.
And Paul Schwain deserves a lot of credit, too, because that was my worry, was the sound, and he made sure that, he did a great job of it.
Yeah, we missed Scott Jones this year, but it was really nice of all to step up, Scott's always done such a great job.
And now the girls can come up to him.
Okay, so we have the Model UN group of kids that are here.
Come on up, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
Just grab a couple of chairs and-
Thank you for coming out tonight, I know that Mrs. Forschkov wanted to be here, but she was unable to, so that was nice of you to still come. If you want to just tell us who you are and what grade you're in, that would be great.
I'm Anna Collins, I'm going to be a senior, so right now I'm a junior.
I'm Anna Shullen, I'm same.
I'm Julia Walsh.
Paige Lickley, same as them.
Are you all like keeping your fingers crossed that you're gonna go on to 12th grade?
Anna made it sound like she was gonna do it now.
I think they'll make it, no.
Anna got her award and was like, "I don't deserve this."
Who did that?
Anna Sh- You deserved it, Anna.
I was walking across the stage, it wasn't my best move, but-
Well, get prepared for next year, because you're gonna have to walk across the stage a few times.
All good stuff. Next year will be an exciting year, for sure.
Yes, looking forward to it. So, tell us a little bit about Model UN, please.
We started it this year, we're new to it, we don't, walking into it, we didn't know anything about the club, except I just thought it would be a fun thing. I didn't really know much about it, but it turned out to be a good choice to start it.
So, what made you think of that one? Or were you thinking of just to do something, and then you had a couple in your mind, and then you went out and investigated it, and then?
I just had seen like, I'd heard of Model UN before, but only a little bit, and I was just curious about what it was, and it turns out to be really interesting, and I'm glad that I followed through on it, so.
Then what was your next step? Did you then go to administration and ask if you could go ahead and, and do that, and then you had to find like a teacher? That would be the-
Yeah, during the club signup fair, I was like, there was a form for any club you wanted, and other people started new clubs this year, which was great, like Irish club and things like that, so I got people interested, had people sign up, and then turned it into the principal, and he signed off on it, and then I got Ms. Tortskov to VR advisor. And I'm really glad she did, because she was so helpful and helpful.
Couldn't have had a better teacher do it, because she-
She was wicked English, too.
Yeah, she loves history, so.
Yeah, she was really into it, too, like, she was so ready to get us into conferences, and like, we went to St. John's Prep just to like watch a conference, it was like December 8th, 2018, and we didn't participate in it, but it really like, it was like ten of us went, and it was really, really like eye-opening, we got to see like actually what it was, because before we just talked about it, and it's way different from what you're like seeing it.
So, can you tell us a little bit of what it is, you know, so you observed it, so what did you observe, and what will you be doing?
So, we were all like assigned to different conferences, because there was like one big conference, and then there's like many conferences, like talking about committees, yeah, like talking about different issues, and so when we went to St. John's Prep, there was like three separate committees that we all went to, and we were all in like groups of two, and we would just like sit in the back. I know for me, I went with Fiona Janelle, and we would just sit in the back, and so it's like, there's a lot of like motioning, there's a lot of language that we didn't know about, and there's a lot like, you, I don't know. When, the one for St. John's Prep, it was like each country was one person, but then we actually did a, like, we participated in a committee this year where it was like we were with other people, so it was-
So, you're assigned a country, and then you're the delegate for that country, and you represent their, their group, yes.
Yeah, so like Anna and I, along with Anna Moore, we represented China, talking-
Yeah, so like Anna and I, along with Anna Moore, we represented, um, China, talking about the rights of the Kurdish minority. So we were in another, in like a whole committee with a bunch of other delegates that were each representing their own country, and so then we just discussed like the Kurdish minority and solutions for that kinda thing, and.
Your goal in any committee that you're in is to pass resolutions, so like preferably that'd be like a law or like a mandateation of like something to address the issue, so like, I don't know what their committee was, but when we went to the, um, conference, we went to one conference this year, which was at Northeastern, it was like a few weeks ago, and like they were in a Kurdish minority, um, committee, but I was with Fiona Janelle in like a preserving water resources committee, so like, the good thing about Model UN is, like, no matter what you are interested in, like, they have like the Security Council, which is more like focusing on like wars and like conflict at the time, and they have like, um, like the UNEP, which is the Education, like, Committee. No, not education, environmental, sorry, but, um.
And that's just cute.
So like, no matter what you like, like, they have things that you can do, and you sign up, you don't just randomly get put into a committee, you sign up, and you can also choose the country, so like I was Japan with Fiona, so like.
Didn't you win an award?
Yeah, we won Best Delegate for our first conference. And Nick Hiltz won Best Position Paper. Yeah, we had another person win Best Position Paper, which was surprising, because we did prepare, and we wrote position papers, and we did the best we could, but like, we didn't know all the vocab, there's so many terms, it's the UN, like, there's so many like political terms that we, we didn't know, and like.
Procedure and all.
Like, so just going there was like really scary, but like I think Ms. Schwartzkopf like had a big role in like being like, we just need to go to one, so it keeps going, like, we can't give up, so we went, and it was like really, really impressive, especially that like some of us were able to like win awards, and like, we didn't really know what we were getting ourselves into.
Yeah, cause there was like some people that, it was like, maybe they're like fifth conference.
It was like just our first. They knew exactly what they were doing, like they sounded like real representatives, like, we were like, I motion.
It was really cool, because we went into it so blind, we had no clue what we were doing. Yes, we were prepared, and we knew sort of what to expect, but since Ms. Schwartzkopf, she hasn't done this before either, so she was kind of going into it blind, but she was really supportive and like telling us, it's gonna be okay, when we get there, you'll learn, you'll pick it up. And we really did, like after about five-ish minutes of just watching what was going on around us, we were calling motions, we were like, we were presenting resolutions, things like that, and so it was just really cool to be able to learn that quickly and to improve so much, and by the end, we felt so confident doing things. Julia got Best Delegate, and she got a little gavel, it was pretty cute, yeah.
It just helps with like public speaking and negotiating.
Absolutely, for sure.
To agreements, it's just, you're not gonna learn it any other way than just stepping up and doing it.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's also like so independent, because a student is the chair, so like the person that runs the whole committee, and like, there's maybe like fifteen to like, maybe the most could have like fifty delegates in a committee, and so like, there's no adult in there like regulating the thing at all, but like the chair takes it.
Northeastern student.
Well, yeah, we had college students running ours, just cause it was at Northeastern, but like at high schools, high school students run it, so like, there's no like advisor, and they're making sure it's going right, like everyone just takes it so seriously.
There's room for error and learning, and.
Yeah, we messed up a couple times, but.
Even in our like committee, you think like Northeastern is like a big college, like so strict, but our committee had like problems in it right when we started, like there was two United States, there was two Chinas, they like mixed up the committees.
One of the kids from the United States came back drenched in a hot fudge and fountain water, so it was a little, um, things go wrong, yeah, but it was just, it was really funny, sorry.
So how many kids participated?
Um, in our club?
Yeah.
We had like a study like fifteen.
I feel like it's fifteen, but I think like twelve went to the conference.
Yeah, twelve ended up actually going.
And was that on the weekends, or was it?
Um, it was a Friday.
During school, during school.
Yeah.
And so how did you guys get there?
Um, we took a bus, yeah.
School bus. So, um, with the bus, yeah, so I'm the treasurer, so like, the bus, we had to, um, we had to pay for the bus, and it was three hundred dollars, and like we heard that, and we were like, okay, this is our goal. Paying seventy-five per person.
You had to pay seventy-five per person to enroll, um, like in the first place, and then you're like, but it's like, we wish we could drive ourselves, but that's not really how it works, so like, we did many bake sales. Around ten.
A lot of lunches just sitting out there.
Um, it was good, it was good.
And it really worked, we did it like, instead of doing it, like, we did one or two outside of school, and then we actually got permission to do it during lunch, but like outside of the lunchroom, so like a lot of kids, especially the middle schoolers, were like reeling into it.
Yeah.
And we, one of the times we made like, during like, after all three lunches, one of the times we made like seventy-two dollars, like in one day, so it's like, that's how we got it.
Like, we were the first club recently to get permission to do like a bake sale during lunch, just because of like the rules of the cafeteria and health and stuff like that, like we really want brownies all over the place, but, um.
For a good cause.
Yeah, for a good cause, and so, um, apparently a bunch of advisors of other clubs kind of got word of what we were doing, and we're a little annoyed, and they wanted to do those things too.
So you jumped on your good idea.
Yeah, so next conference.
So our next conference might prove to be a challenge, cause we're kinda known for our bake sales, but now there's gonna be this kind of end.
There's only so many bake sales.
Yeah, and we like.
And cat wash. Brainstormed, um, we brainstormed other, like, um, fundraisers to do, cause like there's so much you can do, but like we thought our first time, and like we were willing to like pay more on top of the seventy-five if you had to cover the rest of the bus, but like, next year we hope to do like a longer conference, just to like compete with, yeah, compete with clubs like Deca, which like offer trips, and people are like, oh, I'll do Deca, so I can go to Chicago, or FBLA, I guess, was this year, but. Yeah, so like, we love to go to a conference like that, like Ms. Schwartzkopf was talking about like BC, which does one, which is like you stay there overnight, and it's like a two-day, um.
That's our bigger, it's our biggest goal.
I just think the club has a lot of potential.
Sure, it's great.
So this is, yeah.
I'm so happy you guys brought this to the school, I've been wanting, kind of wanting for somebody to do that for quite a while, so it's really great, really wonderful.
There are conferences all across Europe, all across, like, there are plenty of opportunities.
Yeah, there's, there's like Asia and all UN, like there's more than one, it's crazy.
Lots of bake sales. Not just the bus anymore.
Bake sale every day for you.
No, and next year we want to do more, make, like definitely more than one conference, we're actually thinking of doing, like participating in the St. John's one, which would be less money, but it's also kinda like a beginner one too. So like I know we did Northeastern, which was, was kind of a beginner one, but St. John's is something in December, like early in the year to like maybe warm us up if we wanted to do the BC one, which I think is in like May.
Yeah, it's later.
Multi-day. Yeah, like overnight.
And then a couple nights in Boston.
Cause one of the main goals of the club is those conferences, and so like, there's only so much you can do in a classroom, like after school for an hour or so, like, just, cause it's the sheer volume of people that are at these conferences, it's just so cool to see all these different viewpoints coming in and seeing all these kids from all these different schools. So there's only so much we can do in our little club of fifteen people, so we kinda want to be going to all these conferences, and it's super cool, and it leaves like a legacy for like future.
Yeah, we definitely want like, don't want the club to die out, cause right now it's mostly juniors.
Underclap, there's two people that will be seniors next year, so we'll have two juniors, and the rest of the club will be seniors, so we're hoping to, it's something great to keep going, and for it to be like more of an opportunity for kids, like Deca's kind of the only opportunity for like, if you wanna do like a big club that's like well-known, that you can go to big conferences like that and like experience public speaking, but like Model UN's so different, like it has nothing to do with business, and business isn't for everyone, and like with Deca, like it's just marketed to like business, business, like you need that, but like the United Nations is becoming so much more important, just like as more issues are being present in the world, especially like with the environment, stuff like that, that like the whole world needs to be worried about, and so like for the club to stay alive after we all graduate, and then there's two people left, like, wouldn't be so great, so just.
You gotta start recruiting now.
Exactly.
And if we have all these conferences next year, that'll be something to show people, like we do all this cool stuff, join our club.
Yeah. So can you do, you have to be a freshman to join, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah.
So you could take freshmen?
There are, um, middle school, there were middle schoolers at the St. John's Prep one, and middle schoolers at the Northeastern one, and, um, so maybe if some kid in the middle school wants to keep it going, or if we can find somebody to do that.
I feel like if they're interested, like we wouldn't be like, no.
Exactly, cause like, it's great to start young, and then maybe they could be those people who we were looking at that were like, wow. Or even just having an activity at like Pembroke, and just having a day where like we bring flags and stuff, and get them interested at a young age, so, yeah.
Sure.
Good idea. What can you tell them being, um, with your expertise in Model UN?
They, they, I mean, you got it right for the most part, it's, it's, you're, it's, it's, you're talking about, um, ethnic minorities and representing China, two positions that you probably had no idea what the heck it was.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, and so it's, it's this random kind of chunk of knowledge that you have, that you can then contextualize with what you do know about the world around you, and what, you know, a US position on that might be, or, you know, it's, it's, um, the ability, it's, it's issues that you're never gonna talk about anywhere else, and things that you really shouldn't know about, frankly, um, and I don't mean it that way, but it, it's things that you would never have a reason to know about, that you can really kind of bring into your, into your mind and understand, and, um, and the only way to understand it is to go, as you, as you said, the, you can talk about it all you want, but when you're there for five minutes, you get it, and it.
And so it's like, so interesting how like, we were assigned to China, and it's not our opinions that we're saying, it's like, we have to like kinda be China.
That's really cool, yeah.
You know, get into that and like research what they think, you can't just go into it being like, this is what I think, and so it really like opens you up to like new opinions and like different aspects.
It's hard to not to.
Yeah, it's, like, if you really are like, like passionate about something, and you have to be something else, it's also really.
No one knows anyone else's names, like it's all just, you are China, you are Turkey, you are Iran, like, it's just so.
You'll get your opinions at the door.
Yeah, you leave them at the door, you are China.
You are all these people.
It's in some cases, you need to sort of advocate for, if, if a topic is women's rights in Saudi Arabia, you need to, you need to understand the government policy and, and run with it, and even though it's kind of counter to everything that you might believe in otherwise, that's what you gotta do.
Yeah, like with Kurdish minority, there was places like Si, no, Syria, Syria, and then like, there was a bunch of people that like probably had to say stuff against the minority, just because of where they were, and like, it was kind of about the minority wanting to be independent. So like if you were where that minority stayed, you'd have to be like, no, even if you believed, like maybe they should get to be independent.
Right.
And China has ethnic minority, like China has challenges that correlate very well to the Kurdish minority issue, and.
So does it start with an issue?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, and that's, so how does, how does the discussion start?
The, um, oh yeah, so what was cool about the program that we went through, they had like a huge resource for us on Google Drive, and so it had, you would go into it, you would click the, um, like, the, the committee that you were assigned to, the country you were assigned to, and they had all this reading material about it, so you could do your research beforehand, and you could write your position paper based on that, so your position paper was basically like where your country stands on the issue, where, um, like who their allies are, and what they want to do.
What you wanna like, what your research.
And so you would submit that, and that's where you could get Best Position Paper.
And then every chair reads the position papers and gives you feedback, actually, so you can like get better.
And so then when you get to the committee itself, there's this thing called a speaker's list, so you can put your name on that, or your country's name, and then you can give like an opening remark, like how you feel about it, and it's like a little speech that you can prepare. And, um, we didn't know they did that, so I wrote mine like two seconds before I said it.
We were like page size of things.
And so that kinda kicks off the discussion. People can call for things like, um, moderated caucuses, which is where the, um, the chair would say, okay, so you wanted to speak about possible relocation places for the Kurdish minority, and then people who wanted to speak would motion their card up, and they'd be like, okay, China, go through the floor, yeah, so you have thirty seconds to talk about it.
You have like thirty seconds. You do it, you have to like, the language is so like, not strict, but it's like so specific, like if you don't get it right, they're not gonna be like, oh, sit down, but.
Another kid in the committee will be like, that's wrong.
Yeah, but you just have to be like, when you do moderate caucuses, you have to say like how long, like five minutes, and then thirty minute speaking time, so then, and they'll do like, yeah, like you'll yield your time, they'll like tell you, they'll
Yield my time to the chair.
Pretty professional.
Hit the gavel like twice if you have ten seconds left, it's like all like that, and then you could do like unmods, which are just.
You chat.
You chat with anyone.
I think it's great, you, you, this is definitely an experience that you'll use, like maybe not the information that you wouldn't need to know about, but.
The skills that come with.
Just understanding the process.
And just the public speaking.
It's the research, it's the public speaking, it's negotiated, like they're, they're, the, the, the U, the Model UN aspect of, is almost secondary to all the skills.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And the reason you should go to the bigger conferences is they draw from a wider audience, so it's not just, you know, Eastern Mass, and, and, it's, you're gonna be sitting next to people from Texas, California, whatever, but then also students from around the world, at the bigger ones, so it's, and where else can you go sit and learn from and about people?
Right.
That, you know, that you're just sitting next to.
I wonder if there's any type of grant that.
Yeah, that was our only concern, cause like we have only fifteen people, and like the bigger conferences like are our goal, and they're the most appealing to people, cause like traveling, it's fun with high school, that's what people wanna do, but like not all students can cover paying, like if we were to go somewhere, like we were looking at like how much it would cost and all, and that's like, it was like three hundred at least, cause you have to pay for the flight, depending how far it is, a hotel, the conference, which to enroll in, depending on what school it is, is expensive, and like fundraisers can take us so far, but like, there's just like some students, they, yeah.
This wasn't a huge conference, and we like just barely did it with our bake sales.
Just reached three hundred, no overflow.
One of the students ended up donating five dollars, like right before we went, just to reach our goal.
Here's some nagging, hey mom, wanna cookies?
Suzanne, do you feel bad?
We do, I'm feeling bad, like school choice, we have to take some money, it's school choice. We need to take some money out of school choice and delegate it for field trips.
I think it sounds fantastic, and I'm so proud of you girls for, um, you know, bringing it forward and, and actually doing, you know, going and doing it. What about men? Are there any male students?
Yeah, we have.
Jessie, we have Nick.
Jessie, Nick, of the other.
Uh, Paul B.
I think like the reason we have so many girls is because I was the one, and I had my friends.
It's like all our friends.
Yeah, it could be spread more throughout the school.
So many people have said like, I wanna sign up next year, could, after seeing what we did this year.
You guys should like make posters like outside of, like you know all the business section of the, the hallway has those like posters about like surviving without business class, like you should make that about Model UN, about like the public speaking and stuff like that.
I think it's great, and so when you go to the next one, will you come back and tell us all about it?
Yeah. Well, it'll probably be the St. John's one.
And so when will that be, is that the?
It's December.
Well, that's December one.
And don't say I didn't deserve that, or I shouldn't have gotten that.
Anna walking past, her diploma.
Well, that's great.
That's great, thanks ladies.
But good luck with it.
Thank you.
Tell Ms. Schwartzkopf we did a great job.
Start recruiting.
Thank you for coming.
And good luck on your finals tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Financial literacy.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, who, who did you say before you want?
Well, we were gonna have Dan.
You were saying the, the, the girls that you want to. Uh, okay, so we have the trip that we wanted to talk to the principal about.
Oh, no, should we do Ryan first, and, cause Dan's.
Sure, Dan has to.
Sorry.
Ryan.
Sorry, Ry.
Again, it's a privilege, questions?
Thank you.
So I'll just start off, Girls Lax, head coach Morgan Deshaun came back for year number two, we had to hire a new JV coach, Laura Britton, our SRO.
Yeah.
She did, it was a success, is seem to enjoy her off the field.
She enjoyed it too.
Oh, yeah, it sounded like.
On the field rather than on duty.
Does she pull a uniform?
No. Oh, she looks like a kid.
No, she's not.
She just wore the vest, in case she comes.
I didn't know, um, John Pingree was the goalie.
So he's always like, sit him down and helped out, it's, having a goalie coach is so.
Just had to look out the back window, right?
Yeah, and you're like, oh, they're out.
That's awesome.
The girls love it, love him, man.
Yeah, he brings a different dynamic.
Was he a goalie?
I don't think he was a goalie, I think he just teaches general athletic.
So well with, um, with kids.
Yeah.
He's always coached, he's a career.
He was my favorite youth coach, um, taught me how to.
Yeah, he was a great guy.
Give a handshake, so he's great.
And he didn't wanna come coach the boys' lacrosse?
No.
Well, I think he only has limited time, but you know, it was just, it worked into his schedule. We did, yeah.
So some awards that the girls got, Lindsay Feeks ended up being the Offensive Player of the Year for the team, Brooke O'Donnell was the Defensive Player of the Year, the Coach's Award went to Julia Walsh. And then Cal Second Team All-Stars went to Brooke O'Donnell, Lindsay Feek, and Lee Eckenberg.
Nice.
Yeah, that's great.
So going into the season, I was looking, this was one of the teams during the spring where they were hoping to be on the playoff, playoff birthday, last year they made playoffs, they were ten and ten this year, obviously there were some, some games they were missing players due to Florida trip, and then they hit the injury bug.
Yeah.
Did they?
Which is too bad, concussions, um.
It's too bad.
Seven and eleven is.
No, that definitely in the Cape Town League where it's across the league. So they they held their own clearly, so Hamilton won, they lost sixteen to six and they ended up their last game of the season. If Hamilton won and won, they'd make the state tournament, we kept them out by defeating them by, I think it was eleven to seven. So the team continued to compete all year and that's basically all we can ask, as long as they, once you're out of playoffs, it's tough to go in day out and compete, so I was proud of them. Lindsay Feeks ended the season with forty-four goals.
She's a good player.
So she has one more year, she's coming back, she'll be a senior next year and unfortunately they lose Brooke O'Donnell defensively. But they do return a strong goalie, so. Boys lacrosse now, two and sixteen, coach, first year coach Terry Hartford and Scott Conti was his assistant. Team MVP Jake Dulcey, the Begataway Award is Carmine Palmasano. So that award, you might be wondering what what that is, so that's somebody that embodies what you want in an athlete. It's originated from way back when the Indians created lacrosse.
Is that where it came from?
Coaches award Jared Graff, Eastern Mass All-Star and first team All-Star was Jake Dulcey. So if you're voted as the top eight players in the league, you're considered an Eastern Mass All-Star. So congratulations to Jake.
He's going to um.
Yep, he's going to Indicott to play.
Oh, good, I follow actually the little sports, so I'll be following him, good for him.
That whole complex has been.
Gorgeous place.
It's more like a resort than a college.
Then Cal second team was Carmine and Doit Purcell. Jake Dulcey became the all-time leading point scorer in school history, broke my friend Ben Warren's record.
How many?
So he ended up with three hundred and twenty, Ben had two forty-six, I think, so Ben had two forty-six.
Good for Ben, but Jake, wow, that's quite impressive, huh?
So it shows the talent that Jake has.
Yeah, he really does.
So is he the only one of our kids that will continue to play in um college?
Correct, yeah. Questions on boys lacrosse? Okay, perfect. Softball, one and sixteen, head coach Sean Doherty, JV coach Ted Strander. Some awards here, coaches award went to Emma Thompson, the most improved player went to Carly Higgins, Rookie of the Year, Allison Mansfield. She was actually, she's a freshman, she started at shortstop, so at least defensively, things things look on upward trend. Cal first team went to Maeve McNeil. And Cal second team was Madeline Magavero, Magavero. This weather, this softball fields are tough with the whole field being dirt. So there's a lot of games where the team had to play four games in five days, three games in a row, they had weekends game, weekend games. Practice times were tough, cause if it's raining, you can't go outside, you can't use the grass, so they were limited mostly indoor practices on at least a few times a week. There are always that one one inning where they have where they fumbled, I guess per se. But besides those couple innings, the team competed. They're gonna miss Maeve McNeil, she was regarded as one of the best catchers in the league.
Wow, that's really impressive. Is she gonna play in college, do you know? Wow, she's a good athlete.
Yeah, she is. But the league, they'll bring back starting pitcher Madeline Magavero.
That's good.
Baseball, six and fourteen, head coach Phil Desflitz, I think he's in his sixth sixth year, JV coach Crystal Moth, assistant coach Dan Manning. Hidden coach Brian Paulus, here the team award, MVP MVP was Max Gerard. Coaches award went to Christopher Swenson.
He gets the coaches award and the principal.
Must show something, right?
Yeah, he's got that style.
The other coaches award went to Patrick Cedric, Georgetown baseball leadership award went to Justin Zakowski. The other Georgetown baseball leadership went to Ian Kintorski. The Burt's Bofford Spirit of the Game Award went to Timmy Timothy Chianca. And we had two Cal second team All-Stars, Max Gerard and Adam Adamsky. So they had one of the toughest non-league schedules that I can remember, they were playing NADIC, I'm like, coach, you're playing NADIC. But there was a connection there, but with the coach and the two coaches knew each other and whatnot, but they were ranked fourteenth in the state. And we had them on the ropes in the first inning, it was, we were up one nothing, bases loaded, no, second and third, one out, we couldn't get that run in. So they were, we had opportunities to win that game and it kind of showed the talent the team had, they were able to compete with the fourth ranked team in the state.
So that's a question that I have for you as the athletic director, just as just a question in terms of, cause I was wondering the same thing, I'm like, why would you wanna put like our kids, um but I I you know, I get that there's usually a connection, but doesn't it?
Connection was there and I also think the team's expectation and talent was there. Initially, where it was, this could be a legit game and I want I want to see, if they were eight or twelve and eight and they lost that game, we wouldn't be talking about it, I guess, right now. But I think that's a good test to see where your program is in regards to the state. And I, as a former baseball player here, I'd like to see, we're not just gonna be rolled over by a.
Okay, yeah, so what was that, so how bad?
Yeah, we, it was five to two, we lost five to two, we were winning up until I think the fourth inning, I think the fourth inning and then then it just opened up a little bit.
So that's what I was just wondering like, because I know when a couple of other like say like the basketball team or something, they go against like a team, even if it's like before the, just to do like a, you know, a preliminary, a scrimmage or something and I'm like, hmm, I can see wanting to do it for this reason, but I can also see not wanting to do it because you just wonder if the kids, if it's just gonna.
Be detrimental, yeah, no, I completely agree, so I think that was, you try to, when you schedule non-leagues, you try to have one game. This is a really tough game, this is gonna be where judgment where we are. You'll have two games where, okay, these are wins and then you have the other game, alright, this is gonna be a fifty fifty game. Anybody can win, so that's kind of how I suggest coaches, this is how you wanna play a non-league game. But if you're if you're a team that's struggling, or you know your team's gonna struggle, you need to schedule games that you can be competitive with, it's kind of.
And you play up though, that's part of, you you play up to the team that you're.
Yeah, and that's what the teams, that's pretty much what we've been, what they did.
And you gotta see how, you gotta see what it looks like to be able to to build those skills.
Yeah, absolutely, so it's always good for the kids to see, okay, we can, it could be a confidence booster or detrimental, depends how they look at it.
NADIC is such a huge district too.
But if you're always playing, if you're if you're always winning, you're not getting challenged.
Sure, yeah, I always find though with Georgetown, it just seems that they have a preconceived notion about the the teams that they're playing, like, oh, I'm gonna play so and so tomorrow and, oh, we're gonna get killed. Or, oh, we're gonna win this, it's like, just go out there, you know, do you?
Yeah, one hundred percent, that's one thing that's trying to change in the culture and mindset and that's what one of our preseason, we always have a preseason meeting for each season and that's we're trying, the new coaches that are coming in are realizing, what's going on, we have coaches coming from Masco and then Coach Hartford was the same, like they're already defeated before they got there, it's like Masco. You can compete with Masco, it's not, it's not crazy.
We can compete with any of them, it's just that they just got.
Well, they go through cycles too, right? We, you know, you build, you build, you build, you get a seasoned team, those seasoned kids graduate, now you're back to building.
It just always seems some of them, they're always.
Oh no, I agree, I've heard them say.
They get so nervous when it's Masco or Hamilton went on and it's like, just, I would love to get that mindset, just out and just say, you know, just go out there.
Just go out, who cares?
Yeah.
So is the purpose of playing Nantucket or is it Nantucket Martha's Vineyard, is that the same purpose of playing?
So Nantucket, the small, that's one of the comparable, obviously, uh that trip moving forward, I'm.
We can't find closer.
Ah yeah, no, so next year, I'm not sending the team to Nantucket.
Yeah, that's a long day.
Weather, it it's a nice.
Weather wise, it's never been great.
No.
It's always been.
Always gonna have to judge the weather and then um you never know, it's, I think originally it started to be like a team bonding type trip.
And it never.
And now it's.
No, but it was also supposed to be both teams, you know, we would host Nantucket and it was always separate, you know.
Oh, right, the Georgetown kids staying.
Right, so it really wasn't, it was sort of defeating the whole purpose.
I didn't know that that was, so for both softball and football, we're not gonna reach out to them?
No, softball, football will probably be, still do it, just because that's your only, it's the one it's that one game and the weather isn't.
And that's where the coach is from, right?
Yeah, coach went to Martha's Vineyard.
Oh, okay.
But we play Nantucket and.
Okay, so no more softball in Nantucket. Yeah, it's it's a it's a long, it's a long way.
Absolutely, so Penguin Academy, so they're just starting up, they're just got, they had, we played them in JV softball. So JV softball was struggling to get games, so I reached out to anybody and everybody to get games and we, they just started their JV program. So I got a JV game in with them and then they're transitioning to a varsity level, so varsity next year will be Penguin Academy, which is right down the street, yeah, so there are definitely schools within our area and the inner city teams that you could play them. They're more our skill level.
Right, we do that with football.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
You don't need a ferry to get.
It would be, it would be nice if it was like a one every four years, you do it and so it would mean something, but annually, it's not necessary.
And so how many seniors did baseball lose?
Six.
Did it lose that many?
Lost six, yeah.
That's why I think they were so disappointed in the season.
Yeah.
Cause this, they were really, this was a a season they really wanted to do well, so.
Even Block led the way with three home runs, which, there's a lot of leader uh record setters, or top ten in records set this year for um the team, the team brings back both starting pitchers. The next year, the MIA put in, we have to follow NFHS, there's only two states in the country that don't follow high school rules. Massachusetts and Texas, so now we're incorporating pitch counts. So right now, there's no pitch count rule, so next year, that's gonna be a struggle for the smaller schools, cause you you don't have.
Well, go play Texas.
Yeah, we'll go down to Texas.
So does that also mean, so pitch count and then you can't?
So it would be a rest, you throw fifty pitches, you have three, three days rest, for example.
That'll be tough.
Yeah, will be tough, cause we usually do Tuesday, Thursday, it always seems like on Monday.
It's always Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So it's gonna be a grind, for some of the, some of the teams.
I'm sure Coach Desflitz is already figuring it out.
Oh yeah, but it's gonna be tough to actually implement for both teams, it's always goes by the home book. So one of the costs, they haven't figured it out, but cost, they might wanna hire another umpire behind home plate for baseball games, at a JV rate. That was just thrown out there.
Seventy-five dollars a day.
Just to sit there and click a button, not a bad gig.
I know, can't they give community service to somebody?
Yeah, there's a discrepancy between pitches, I'm sure coaches would.
Yeah.
Go crazy. So the state hasn't figured out how they're gonna implement the actual logistics of the pitch count, but it's coming next year. That's all I have for the spring review, there were like two other things I wanna touch upon, unless you have a question.
Total athletes, maybe it's more, was total athletes comparable?
It was comparable to last year, we actually improved, boys lacrosse went up six, but we're also, most of them were seniors that just came back to join. Baseball went down too, everything was around plus or minus one or two, it wasn't crazy. The one sport that is not on here is middle school track, last year we had fifty, this year we had thirty. So it's, it's kind of hit or miss on that grade, there's only, you know, two grades to pull from.
Thirty of our kids, or thirty combined, because we're combined, we're a.
No, so that's just our middle school, we have a middle school track program that competes against the Cal middle school teams. So that's just us, seventh and eighth. Uh with that being said, the new MIA, there's a new MIA co-op rule where it used to be largest, or you combine enrollment for um this uh alignment for what division you're in. So they're getting rid of that and they're just going larger school enrollment, so for track, for example, uh been in discussion with Triton. If Triton wants to take us on for track, they won't get bumped up a division, that was one of the reasons why teams didn't want us to join in a co-op. They would get bumped up a division. Yeah, so that ended up half.
They wanna dominate where they are, right?
We cost them like four years ago a state champion and they never got over it, which I don't blame them, but. So that's a good rule for us, uh the other new thing, uh Kevin Fair was hired as the new girls' basketball coach. Girls' basketball coach, booster so far has been successful flocking, I don't know if you guys have seen the thing that goes around, I'm sure it is. That was great, we're looking for a coach chair, if anybody knows anyone.
I wrote a blog about that today.
Okay, so are they gonna do a co-president?
Well, well, they they'll look for a president, if somebody really wants to do that. But if they can't find somebody who really wants to do that, there is someone who's happy to be a co-president, so it's really either or. Shannon's moving.
I know Shannon's moving, who's the, was it Kelly? Oh, Lisa Cherwick.
Lisa Cherwick, yeah.
And Boris Tobinkin and and um Leah are co-treasuring. So that's.
And Kelly's still the treasurer?
No, no, that Kelly's stepping back and um Leah and Boris are.
So she's gonna.
Transition.
Wasn't Kelly?
Kelly was doing one year with Shannon.
And then she's gonna transition them into the position. Am I still the secretary?
Yes.
That didn't change?
I tried to make a motion.
Power is so high with your minutes. I didn't go last night.
But if somebody's interested in that, I know I sent a tweet out and I sent the blog and we'll just keep, just keep.
I want, I do wanna say a special thanks to Shannon, she loves watching that, she's been great.
She's been wonderful.
She did do amazing.
For a lot of programs and time effort has been unmatched.
She is fabulous, we appreciate everything she does and it's a lot.
How much did that um fundraising bring in?
I don't know, this.
It was over four grand.
It was rough, right, right around four. They're still waiting on, they said they could have went another three months, but I think they just.
Yeah, it's good because you don't wanna like wear it out either, so next year, maybe it'll double.
But they've got some good ideas that are different, like they're talking about, you know, people who go online and purchase like a kind of a flag you can put on your yard, like proud parent of a lacrosse player or something like that, you know, you could have whatever tailored to whatever it is you want it to say.
Signs, that fundraiser has a lot of potential.
You can put it on the sign, there are poles.
This house is where graduate so and so lives. I thought that was in North End over.
They were talking about painting, I think it was the G, people could have the G painted at the base of their driveway.
Yeah, driveway or or grass.
A lot of places do that.
Order arrangement it's set up and it can be really easy and people, I think, would really love it, you could use it all year round.
But they would like to do a fall fair or festival, something that, so they're gonna need to start thinking about something like that. They want it to be something that every team can participate in, so if you were doing a fall fair, I'm making it up, the baseball team got the dunk tank and manned the, you know, organized the duck tank or, you know, if somebody else gets, does something else. But just something that all the teams could purchase, maybe just family fun.
I'm sure that insurance, wouldn't the insurance binder for that be costly or no?
I don't know, I don't know.
I wonder about that.
I don't know.
But it sounds awesome, because that fair we had years ago was was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, but some, you know, a lot of places, they have to make it, they donate them, you know, for the day. So I, I think it's just a.
I remember, I remember it, but it was fun.
I know, but it's it's insurance, but I thought he meant the.
Wasn't PTA?
Do you know who did, who did the fair?
That was done through the sports boosters, right?
Yeah, but it was in the parking lot of a high school.
But they didn't, but they didn't make any money on that.
Carlos Gazito did that.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think they're talking about like real vibes, I think they're talking about, you know, just kind of. Little fairy things, you know, not fairy, but fairy like things.
Yeah, well, have you seen the the news the last couple of weeks about the bouncy houses and when the gust of wind comes and the the kids are in the bouncy house.
It's really bouncy now.
Trampoline, kids are on the trampoline.
Hopefully some family will be able to put something together, cause they're pretty excited.
Well, I hope so, I hope there's somebody that will come up and um take over the president, because that's a, it's a big undertaking.
Eric Geier uh offered to um be the person who goes to the individual sports. And, you know, kinda recruits a, a, a member to come to meetings, you know, so that, you know.
Each team's represented, that's the biggest thing, it's getting represented from both, from all teams, so it's not just one team doing.
Speak to the parents that sign up night to help them realize that, oh, there's this position, parent representative and, you know, how rewarding it can be. But every team needs to have one.
Hopefully we'll get that.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you, Ryan.
Well, that's great.
I do have one last but not least, I'm so sorry, I. This was one of the best things, we had the leadership, women in leadership conference.
Oh, yeah, that was great.
That was in April, April thirtieth.
Yeah.
Um, that was fantastic, eight out of twelve Cape Family Schools went, came and we hosted it, uh, thanks to Principal Richards. And everybody involved, so that was it.
What was that about?
We.
What did you say Suzanne?
So.
So women in leadership, we hosted a hundred stu-, or women athlete, or not athletes, it was just people that were looking to build the. Potential, had the potential, but just needed that boost up of confidence, we weren't looking for like top notch or somebody that's. A three tri-sport captain or three sport athlete.
Yeah, I remember people really confused like what you had to be.
Need to get there.
Cause everyone was having a pizza party and I couldn't go. I was like, what's happening in the gym?
So we did host, we had, um.
Not everyone can have pizza.
There were like three people in our class and we were all like, uh.
Yeah.
We were fortunate enough to have fifty out of the, or forty-two out of the ninety-something.
Which is great. And you went, it was the teachers, right, that?
So the teachers nominated.
Right.
And then we were able to, based on the, I, we took everybody, just because the numbers, we needed the numbers to go up. I was, I was thinking if twelve out of the twelve schools gave, um, recipients or nominees, we would have to. Cut our numbers back, but we were able to just, whoever was nominated.
So we're hoping to continue that and be the host.
We'll be the host, hopefully that'll be annually and we're thinking about doing it in the fall, just based on whatever you learn. You're able to incorporate throughout the school year and then maybe touch, touch base during the spring.
So could you do it again for, after you just had it in April, do you think you could?
Why not?
Different, you do it with different groups, different kids.
Different kids or.
And with the Hockmeyer woman who did such a great job speaking.
Great Elizabeth Hockmeyer, she would.
Continue with it or?
She seemed all on board, her speech was great, it was, the girls said they, it was impactful and it really touched them, so.
And then Deb Holt, who is the, the, she and her husband Dana do the, um, peer mentoring program that we run in the fall. So Deb was the one who really ran all the team building activities in the gym.
She's impressive, that team is impressive, I've heard.
Yes, they are.
They've done a great job. Yeah, that, that was great and I, I figured where I saw all the pictures of that day.
Yeah.
But it looked like the kids were really enjoying it.
I, I think I posted on my Twitter.
Yeah, it looked like they were really enjoying it, so hopefully that can be a tradition.
Yeah.
And then we can get more and more schools with, so it's within.
Absolutely, so I invited all Cape Family League schools, so everybody that's in our league, I sent them an invite, some schools wanted to, some schools didn't.
Yeah.
So, but eight out of the twelve, that's great.
Oh, that is good. Good.
Very positive, very positive.
No, thank you, that's good, and, um, thank you for coming to graduation, too, there was so many teachers there, I was so happy.
There's a reason for me to be there, to save.
Thank you, yes. Almost, it was, there was no actual contact.
Yeah, I saw you move it, I didn't know why.
Then he moved it again.
Well, and it was good for the, the photography.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we had to deal with photographers before.
Yeah, it was a great day, well, good, well, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Perfect, thank you, have a great time.
Are you, Ryan, are you, um, whatever happened with the summer programs?
Oh, I'm not, I don't have any, they're so this individual, I know basketballs are having their own.
The summer league, yeah.
The summer camps.
Okay.
Not through. But I know they're trying to.
Yeah.
That's all I know.
Yeah, we know your time is, it's.
Maybe that'll come back sometime, but right now, it's, there's not the interest.
Hopefully down the road, yes, I'd love to have every single sport have something like that, even if it's a three hour, nine to twelve and then afternoon would be something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just wasn't the interest, so we have to wait till, it'll be the right time, it's just not the right time.
That's okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
All right, thank you, also, um, Caitlin Reel is gonna be taking over student representative, like, just for next week. Cause we're on a service trip.
We have a meeting next, you know.
Not next week, but the next week.
The twenty-seventh.
Oh, the twenty-seventh, oh, okay. So Caitlin will be here?
Yes, Caitlin will be here.
We're going on a service trip?
Yeah, to the Pine Ridge Reservation, a native reservation in South Dakota.
Oh, wow, good for you.
Yeah, I'm really excited.
Are you going with anyone that you know?
Paige Lipton, who was just here, uh, it's through our church in Newburyport.
That's great.
Yeah.
Oh, I'd love to hear about it when you come back.
I'll tell you all about it, it was nice meeting some of you and seeing other you. Thank you.
Luck on your exam.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, okay, financial report, do you wanna do Dan?
Do you wanna do Dan?
Oh, Dan, yeah, we'll do him later, come on up.
Gotta find Dan's stuff.
Yeah.
There's two of them.
Oh, no, it's the same thing. Dan's got a couple of things to talk about, we'll grab him at the same time.
Oh, yeah, it is the same thing. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for a wonderful, um, graduation.
Well, too.
It was a really nice day and.
Help.
Yeah, but it, it went really well.
Yeah.
It's true.
It's great.
I was saying earlier that, um, I was, I was definitely one of those hesitant individuals. About the changing of the, you know, the students, like saying the names, I wasn't sure how, you know. It was gonna go, it was just different, you know how people are when something is always the same and then something changes. Um, but I was pleasantly surprised, it was great, I thought the, the kids did a fantastic job.
They do.
Um, but it was just a really great way to incorporate them into that, and I heard from many people that thought the same way, so it was good.
That's good to hear, good, trying to get their voice wherever we can.
Yeah, yeah, that was great, thank you.
I think they also felt very honored.
I would agree, and they were very nervous.
You could see they're very professional about it too, but they were, they did not.
They, they got their nerves out when they were up before, everybody got there, they were like how far away from the microphone they had to be, like.
They took it serious and they were very.
Took it very seriously.
You could tell that they were honored to be up there.
Yeah.
It was, it was great, it was nice for them to do it.
Okay, so, so two things, right?
What are we gonna do first, the Fran-, you wanna do France?
Uh, let's do the trip proposal first.
Okay.
Um, you have the application from, um, Martha Dart and Mary Hayes for a trip to France, um. To, it's gonna be a combined art and, um, language trip and you have the itinerary.
Oh, that's fine.
Pretty impressive where they're going and, um, it's gonna be February twelfth to the twentieth. And they're looking for approval from the school committee to start, um, raising funds and planning the trip.
And Carol, you gonna be a chaperone or not?
I don't know, this is one I like to go on, we'll see, she needs it.
So February, so is that during the school vac-, so it's like a little before, it's before.
Yeah, and the reason for that is the flights are a lot cheaper, we can shave two days before the vacation significantly cheaper.
Yeah, thirty-four hundred dollars, it looks like. So they're gonna do, um, when it says auction, are they gonna have like a little, do you know what they're gonna do?
So all the kids, uh, agree that fundraising is part of going and so they haven't quite ironed out all the details yet. And what that's gonna look like, and they've got some work to do, but those are some of the ideas they came up with.
I read that as a little bit of everything.
But, uh, they, that's part of the agreement, that they have to participate in the fundraising in order to, uh, get the costs down and. Kids were willing to and those are some of their quick ideas.
Yeah, and I hope they, they stress that insurance.
Yes.
Right, the, the differences in the, um, levels of insurance, but that looks like an awesome trip.
So what we'll do is we'll bring out, um, a representative for World Cultural Tours to talk about the insurance, uh, liability, all of those things. And make sure that parents are well informed before the trip, so we'll have a mandatory night for those who are going. Uh, so they have all that information and they know what their options are, to make sure they're well informed.
Yeah, I know, when we were dealing with this before, Dan, we were like, well, should we require them? To get the most expensive insurance, because the problem that we ran into at one point was that if, when, like. Peter wanted to cancel it because there was so much unrest and so he told people we're canceling and, and people did not have. The insurance that would've covered that, and so that was one of the things like our attorney was recommending, is that if you're gonna do these trips. You really should insist that people, cause they're not, they're gonna lose their money.
I think some people might've lost their money when, one time they went to France and there was the volcano in Iceland and there was. Volcanic ash all over the skies and, yeah, nobody could fly.
But can you re-, can you require that?
Well, I don't know, I, you mean, I don't know, I, you probably can't require it, but you, you probably oughta really make it, because. You know, it, it all came down to who had the authority to cancel a trip, right? And if we decide to cancel the trip, then, you know, the, people are out, out of their mon-, they're out their money, right? So one of the things we did talk about was, you know, the different levels of insurance and, and the rec-, the recommendation from our attorney was. You, you should require people to do it, because if something happens to another tour company, what they'll do is they'll divert you. Which is ultimately was the solution to the situation before, they just agreed not to go to Paris. They were gonna like drive the outskirts of Paris and they spent more time, you know, at the beach and all the different things that, the other, outside of Paris.
So, but. Around the volcanic ash, who would've thought that was gonna happen, I mean.
I don't know, I just think that that's a.
Hasn't happened since, but it happened then.
Important for people to really understand that if the trip gets canceled and they don't have insurance, that, we can't help them.
Well, I think if, like that mandatory night, if that.
Yeah, that should be explained, yeah.
Right, nobody can say that they weren't aware of it, the company will thoroughly explain that, but that was a really crazy situation back then.
People were not as upset about maybe the trip being canceled as they were about the fact they were gonna lose their money.
Yeah.
Right, but, right. And they had invested a lot of money and they weren't expecting it.
Significant amount.
Right.
They stressed that, but I'll make sure they.
Yes, that'd be great, just from the, just from the his, the past history.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Iceland still has those volcanoes, so. You know, very unlikely, but it happened to us, to my next door neighbors.
And then what, the, the other one was a discipline, right?
It was, you know, they didn't have the insurance and nobody could fly, there was no, you know, creating a trip around that. Because you just, you couldn't fly to Europe.
Yeah.
We're, we're approving this tonight, or we're making, we're gonna vote on this tonight.
Yeah, that would be the.
Before I make that motion, do you wanna ask any questions about it? No?
Okay.
Um, so I, we'll make a motion to approve the, um. Trip to France, February twelfth to the twentieth, right, uh, twenty, twenty? Twelfth to the, this says.
Twenty nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, I just gotta change it, cause they said twenty nineteen. Um, so, February twelfth through February twentieth, uh, twenty twenty, as presented by Principal Richards.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
I agree.
That's great, I'm looking forward to hearing how, how, how good that will be.
People go, yeah.
Well, and that price is based on thirty, I think, is that right?
It's on the back, it depends, so, based on thirty that, or based on twenty?
And hopefully they'll fundraise enough that it can be cheaper.
Get that down, yeah.
And that's one of the benefits coming early for these approvals, so they can fundraise and, um. And have a trip scheduled the same time and compete, and that's what we ran into early this year.
Yes. Right, so, so that's what, so that's what your great calendar though is gonna prevent, right? It's from, you know, that master calendar from, uh, having all these different trips, because last year, just with the Disney trip and then they come, you know. You hate to see kids get so excited for a trip and then say they can't go because they're fighting for, you know, space on other trips. So, good idea with that. Great.
So the second one is the, um, school sponsored overnight trip handbook. Um, last time I presented, it was a little redundant from the handbook, so what I did is I, I took those pieces out. And made reference to the Georgetown High School, Middle High School handbook, rather than repeat it over again. And then streamlined some of the language, so it became more consistent, so we have a revised version, version of this here. And it's more focused on, on incidents on a overnight trip, not the handbook.
Say the last part again, I'm sorry.
This, um, overnight handbook is more focused on scenarios on overnight trips.
Specific, yes.
The last one I presented to you took pieces from the handbook, it was just kinda redundant and it looked double jeopardy or double penalty. So it's just a reference to the handbook now.
The content was fine, just the format needs to just be.
A little larger font?
No, 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 just all the fonts have to be the same size and the same, yeah, I just think it just needs a little, like even this thing needs to be.
Yeah, we will.
Just a little formatting thing.
Yeah.
Formatted. Just saying.
No, formatted.
Uh, we're voting on this, do you have this on the, in the handbook, right? Okay, so we can mention to approve the Georgetown Middle High School, school sponsored overnight trips. Uh, to be added to the handbook as presented by Principal Richards.
So moved.
Second.
If it's more aesthetically pleasing.
It's formatted better.
Put that clause in there.
All in favor?
I.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you, Dan, that's great. So before Dan, did, we, we have anything else with you, Dan? I just wanted to do two things that I wanted Dan to talk about, one is, um, just quickly, um, some things are going on next week. One of the things when Dan was hired, we talked a lot about the stress and the kids asked a lot of questions about how stress could be relieved, be, reduced a little bit. And so there's a plan next week, uh, under the, with the, with the, um, exams to do a couple of things that maybe Dan could just talk a little bit about. And then, uh, Dan did meet with, um, a couple of the students who've done both DECA and FBLA. Cause remember we talked about that and the kids were very good and very objective about, you know, the pros and cons of each and. So they have our recommendation, so I wanted to share that with you, so do you have two minutes?
Yeah, I do, so, um, and I'll keep it to two minutes. So I wanna talk about the fun part, uh, first, that, um, our SEL committee that we pulled together, social emotional learning. Uh, they didn't like the word committee, they wanted to be called the squad instead, so I'm gonna refer to them as the squad.
Squad.
Uh, and we had a lot of fun this year, so one of the things that they, um, ideas they came up with was activities during finals. Where students could sign up, um, walk up to a QR code, uh, with their iPads and sign up for a meditation class. A yoga class, uh, arts and crafts, um, a music mixing, um, there'll be therapy dogs. Which will be open games, so this will be going on during finals to help with stress and just relieve and open to students. And they can sign up for.
So what did you get, a, a yoga, a yoga teacher to donate their time?
We have a yoga teacher and also if it's very popular, we'll YouTube it and we'll have a, a wellness teacher guide them through it.
So through, so when they're not having their exam.
Right, so, will, so these will be apps on the iPad, so like you can go to iPad and do a.
So they have, um, they will have flyers all around the building, uh, advertising all the events. And to learn more, just scan the QR code.
Okay.[1683.64]
And then they can sign up. So, advertising wise around the school will be the QR code. And then they just show up at the location and-
So, it's an in-person thing, it's not-
Yeah, yeah, no, but I, I, you know, I'm thinking that, you know, sometimes you can go on to YouTube and, you know.
Oh, do a, do a tutorial.
Yeah, you know, like it's too-
It was between exams.
But you'll have actual people doing it.
Yes, and if you have an overflow, we may actually do, you know, Apple TV, YouTube, yoga and-
The teachers had a chance to offer to, offer something.
Sure.
Right, so, some people have signed up and said, yeah, so it's between exams. So, it's that an hour and ten, fifteen?
Yeah, because sometimes those, the young, the underclassmen don't have their own rides to get home. So, it's great to have the, the, um, open campus, but if they can't really go far, that's a great way to-
Or they have two exams, right?
Definitely, yeah, definitely.
Great.
Oh. And the service dogs?
I'm sorry?
The service dogs?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's gonna be in the, um, auditorium?
We're gonna have it in auditorium. We did it with the seniors, which is really popular and, uh, they're back and-
A little too much fun going on back there.
Everyone's having a lot of fun.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that. I think, I think that's gonna be a really cool thing.
Just something different, but, um, you know, it was exactly what people had said they wanted to see, so I'm happy that we're following through on it, yeah.
Okay, then what about DECA?
And then, the, as everyone knows, we had a DECA program, then we flipped to the, um, uh, FBLA, Future Business Leader of America. And we've asked the students and I met with some parents and, uh, listened to them on pros and cons faculty, uh, the business department, pros and cons. And then I really wanted to hear from the students that experienced both, that were part of DECA and part of FBLA. And I've asked them to put together a presentation for me. And I know they have their personal opinions, but if they could keep it to a pro and con factual, I appreciate it. And then at the end, give their opinion or recommendation. And, uh, I'm really proud that the students did a really good job. They supported their argument with data. And it wasn't just a gut feeling and that was part of the requirement and they were excited to do that, nervous. And, um, after consulting with all the stakeholders, uh, we are gonna go with DECA for next year. And the kids are pleased. That was their recommendation coming out of that presentation.
Great.
Oh.
And you, you, do you have a, um, an advisor?
And I've opened it up for advisors and I got some inquiries.
Yeah, well, that's good. I do, I, I wanted to say that I remember when we were going through the whole changing over of DECA to FBLA and, um, I know we all like spent a lot of time like looking at the pros and cons of both. Um, and at that time, you could tell, I mean, there was some pretty distinctive, uh, differences between the two. But at that time, I think we were feeling like if we didn't go with FBLA, um, just because of, it was a less of a time commitment for the advisor and I get that. I mean, they have a lot of, you know, their own stuff that they need to get done. I think we were just happy that it wasn't going away, that there wasn't like a-
Why we needed something.
That there wasn't a business program going away. And I'm glad that the kids in, you know, this year were still able to, um, experience it. But I do think DECA is, is the right way to go, just from my own personal discussions with, with kids too. So, I'm glad that they felt that, that much about it, that they wanted to, you know, go ahead and make a presentation to you and give you that, give you their own, um, you know, their own personal experience situation. So, that's good. I, I think it's gonna be great, but we just need to get an advisor that, that can, uh, commit to it.
I think there's-
Yeah, I think we're in good shape with that.
We're on it.
Yeah.
I remember part of that discussion was the prereq requirement in the business class.
Business class.
Is that still, I mean, it's a DECA requirement.
DECA requires it.
Yeah.
Well, you have to take at least one business class.
Okay.
That wasn't one of the pros of FBLA is that wasn't a requirement, right?
But I, I, I wonder how many kids did FBLA that weren't, that weren't-
Part of the-
Part, no, that weren't taking business classes.
I don't know.
Right, so it wasn't a requirement, but I bet it, I bet probably not right.
Yeah.
Well, I think there probably were some kids that didn't take a business class because sometimes they can't get into them. But, but, you know, I, I, we had sixty-five kids in DECA, so we'll see where that goes. You know, we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, well, that's good. I'm excited to hear that.
Yeah, exciting. Thank you, Dan.
Great.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. Sure.
Yes.
You mind? You're here. I was gonna, you're here for the whole-
Ms. Cawthon, do you wanna come on up?
Yeah, Collins, yeah. We're moving you up, Colin. You're moving up in the world.
Curriculum?
Oh, my gosh. I've been waiting all my life for that. I went to fifty-three years, but I made it.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello there.
Got fun things to share. You can take one and, take one and pass. Thanks for having us tonight. Thanks for Ms. Cawthon for, uh-
Thank you for being patient, sorry.
Backing me up here. Um, so we are here to talk about a proposed, uh, new curriculum for our seventh and eighth grade middle school science teachers and students. Um, so what you have going around is either a teacher's edition or a student edition of one of the modules, uh, from a program called Elevate Science. That is what we are going to propose, uh, that we move forward with starting for next year. So, in your packet, you have just kind of a little brief explainer of kind of the process that we went through. And then you have lots of different brochures, materials, alignment documents that, uh, that can kind of give you a bigger picture of, um, what this Elevate program is all about. But as you obviously know, um, there's a couple of weeks kind of review time for the committee. And as always, like, any questions that you have, um, you can direct my way. I'm sure Ms. Cawthon would be happy to, to answer questions as well. Um, and we'll also, aside, as well as, you know, you being able to borrow these resources, I wanna get you set up with the, um, the, uh, an online demo account, much like we did for STEM Scopes, so that you can peruse that because that was one of the things that, um, really excited me about, about this particular program was the digital learning component about it. So, just, uh, some brief history about our current science program in the middle school. Um, we use the, uh, Science Explorer, um, program. And that had an original copyright date of the year two thousand. Um, our addition is, uh, from my poker round was two thousand nine. Um, so we're a decade into that program and, uh, as you all know-
Science doesn't change.
The underlying science might not change, but the expectation for our students-
Maybe not.
I'd say the science changes.
Some of it has. We've, we've learned new things. It goes in the new curriculum. And the last thing about, of course, both digital curriculum is they update them and can add in things as need be and keep it current.
Yeah.
Well, I think the Penbrook, before you did, um, you adopted STEM Scopes, the prior science books were like nineteen seventy-five.
Which is why most teachers said, we don't have anything for science. They're probably afraid to use that. Um, so when we were, when we were looking through, um, a potential program for the middle school for seventh and eighth grade, in your packet, I, I have just a couple considerations that we, that were kind of the non-negotiables for, for us. The first was obviously standards alignment to our new frameworks in Massachusetts in twenty sixteen. Those new expectations came out, so we obviously needed something that, um, was aligned to that or had some type of crosswalk correlation between their program and the Massachusetts standards because, especially with national publishers, um, they obviously focus on the national standards first, but, um, they wanna make sure that they're attending to the needs of the different states if there are differences. Um, along with that is kind of the, the student-centered learning model, making sure that there are opportunities, um, throughout a program that can allow our students to make sure that they're having that hands-on experience, engaging with the natural scientific phenomena that they're studying and, um, it's not kind of a secondary aspect of the program. We wanted that to, to be at the forefront.
Doing science, not just sitting there.
That's right.
Which is a big component of the new frameworks, right? There are these science and engineering practices that didn't exist prior, uh, in our frameworks and, well, they always existed. But they weren't expected for our students. Uh, now they are, so we need that at the forefront. Um, we mentioned quickly the digital learning component. We, you know, we're a one-to-one school, the middle school. We wanted to make sure that we can leverage the technology that our students have in their hands and extend that learning. That also a lot of times helps out with accommodating and differentiating instruction for teachers and students. So, they can manipulate things rather than be beholden to something that's, that's in a textbook.
So, so, so just to make sure I'm following this right, so they won't physically get this?
So, in the proposal, um, the quote is for a class set of the, the student, the physical student textbooks
Right.
and two hundred and something, um, digital licenses for students. So, the, the take-home for students more often than not would be their iPad where they have access to the whole curricula digitally. But a lot of times it's just easier in a class to tell kids to turn to page thirty-five as opposed to let's all log on and blah, 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 blah.
Or it's the standard, my iPad is at four percent power. And you're like, okay, book, no problem. Yes, you can keep going.
Yeah. Um, and that also from, um, Sherry and Christine also said that that would help for, for any student that has an accommodation where they need something physical or they need to have something, you know, tangible, hands-on, we can provide that for our students. So, it's kind of a, a best of both worlds in terms of digital and print materials. The last two things I already kind of mentioned, the, we wanted a program that was flexible, so we're not locked into doing something in one particular way. We have really skilled teachers in our middle school science courses. We wanna make sure that they are flexible to meet, you know, the students' needs and their own expertise. And, um, lastly is the ease of implementation, um, which fortunately was some feedback that, that I received from the teachers, um, that they wanted something that they could feel really confident, confident, comfortable with, so that there wasn't those kind of typical growing pains or that we could minimize those growing pains when launching a new program.
I'm not sure I caught this or not, but did anybody pilot this? Did anyone bring it into the classroom and maybe try through lessons?
So, this is, no, the, the, not in its fullest extent. One of the reasons for this kind of ease of implementation was the Science Explorer is currently a, a Prentissall Pearson publication. And in the review of this Elevate module, it was updated enough to meet the needs of the new standards and frameworks and expectations, but familiar enough for our teachers that they felt that they would be able to easily implement into their classroom.
Yeah, and Christine and Sherry really deserve a lot of credit because they went through the Massachusetts frameworks, framework by framework, practice by practice. Where is it in this program? And they made sure that everything the state is asking for, whether it's, you know, a science practice, whether it's an engineering goal, whatever it might be, was met by this curriculum and it meshed extremely well with the things they're already doing. Christine, for example, is using a lot more technology-based, uh, lab work and lab assessments. And would this coordinate with that? Yes, it would. So, we can still with those lovely hour and a half long blocks, get the kids in using real-world sensors and probes, doing science the way science is meant to do. And it integrates in very nicely with how this program is structured, which has a lot of math and engineering, which is what the state is pushing for. They're pushing a real STEM philosophy.
Mm-hmm.
And this incorporates that exceedingly well. So, they took a lot of time going through this, discussing it, vetting it, making sure it would work for our kids in terms of levels, what they needed for their various learning styles and what we have been giving them for instruction and what we wanted to give them for instruction, so. We didn't have time necessarily to get in the classroom and say, let's run this as a lesson because the kids didn't have digital access. We didn't have books for everybody. But they really went above and beyond, making sure that this was a program that would work for our students, not just students in general, but the students in Georgetown.
That's really impressive. I, I mean, I'm sure all these books that, you know, they say, oh, it meets the state frameworks and, and you're just, they want you just to, you know, take that for granted, like, well, if they say so, then it is. But you've really looked deeply and, and comprehensively at it to make sure that it does.
So, that's, they, they really, you know, they deserve that round of applause.
Meld with what we're teaching now, so it'll all come together.
And, and feed into the high school.
Yes.
You know, come from the middle school, feed into the high school. So, it's not sort of sitting out there as a clunky little side purse. You know, it flows in very much with what we're doing. Penbrook, going into the middle school and then going into the high school.
Yeah, it's great to hear.
Was this program looked at for Penbrook when we adopted STEM Scopes?
It was, uh, briefly, um, but when we got a look at STEM Scopes and when we went to, where did we go? To Newbury Park to look at STEM Scopes and chat with their curriculum director and see some professional development. The team that was invested, that was, the Penbrook looking at that program was really kind of, um, they were really taken with that. The other thing, the other difference between the Penbrook, um, kind of exploratory kind of group and this was, Penbrook had really nothing in terms of materials as well. So, we were looking for a program that could not only supply the content and the digital learning and all of that, but also the physical materials that you would need. Um, that wasn't so much a concern at the middle school, um, because they have, I mean, again, kudos to the teachers. They have built, you know, their, their supplies from their own homegrown stuff and things that they've kind of pilfered along the way and, and made sure that they have. So, there is the option to purchase kits with, with this, but it's not in what I think would be, you know, proposing, in our proposal. Cause it would, there's a much less of a need for it.
Yeah, I like the other number better.
Well, and I guess the question is, where we just adopted STEM Scopes for K to six.
Yeah.
And now six, grade six is taking this on. I'm, I'm not sure-
Well, this lies with the high school too. So, it's like the eleven is-
So, this is a bridge, so this will-
So, I, so let me, let me explain a little bit about, about how the six, seven and eight middle school standards will work. So, currently, um, currently, uh, Monica McGinnis, our sixth grade teacher, teaches her earth science components through STEM Scopes. And then, um, Sherry and Christine teach the, the life science and the physical science through, right now, the Science Explorer. The proposal for, for next year, for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty would be for Monica to continue teaching through STEM Scopes, the earth science, uh, criteria. And using the, uh, what we're proposing curriculum, the Elevate modules to, again, just teach the life and physical science. We would also use next year as a planning year to plan for moving towards an integrated science, uh, curricula in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So, what that means is, since the standards have changed in the new frameworks in twenty sixteen, there are now sixth grade earth, life and physical science standards. There are seventh grade earth, life and physical science standards, thank you, with engineering standards in there as well. Um, and that is kind of the direction that most districts, the standards are moving, move towards and where we eventually wanna move as well. So, in the tw- year, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Monica would continue to use STEM Scopes to fulfill the sixth grade standards for all three of those subject areas because she already has all of those materials and curricular stuff, cause it's built into STEM Scopes. Right now, she's really only using a third of her stems, of her scopes to hit the earth science, um, units of study. And then, uh, our seventh and eighth grade teachers would use the Elevate modules to fulfill those standards as well. The good thing about this, even though it is kind of two programs across one middle school, if you wanna think of sixth through eighth as middle, the middle grades, is we now, we would now have two programs that are both aligned to our new frameworks. So, regardless of how, what program you're using to, to meet those needs, we will meet those needs. And that's why we also wanted to use that next year as a planning year to really make sure, right? The, all of our, these, these women that are teaching science do a really great job of making sure that we're hitting everything we need to hit. We wanna take that near next year to be a hundred percent confident that we have a trajectory that will meet all of those standards when we, when we move to that integrated model.
Alright, is what you were going to ask, why aren't we using STEM Scopes in the middle school?
Well, or just-
That's where I thought you were gonna go with that.
Yeah, well, I, I, I was curious because I know that the vertical team had, you know, at the elementary level had done a lot of work and, um, did actually pilot the STEM Scopes and it came back with rave reviews. And, and also I didn't know how different the middle school STEM Scopes wa- like, was it considerably different than the elementary?
Um, it wasn't considerably different. I think what was considerably different was the idea of the ease of implementation, which was a consideration for our teachers. For the, for our Penbrook teachers, they didn't have really anything to work with prior to STEM Scopes. So, anything was a welcome addition to their curricula. Whereas in the seventh and eighth grade, they are, they are very versed in, um, the, the, the Science Explorer program. And I was in kind of the same spot, like, okay, let's just roll STEM Scopes up through eighth grade. Um, we did a webinar in first STEM Scopes, I think around October. We set, um, our middle school teachers up with some of the trial accounts and they highlighted a few of those STEM Scopes lessons. And, um, the feedback that I got, that I, that I was very, you know, I was happy that they were willing to share with me was that it, it was, it would be a much more difficult implementation to move fully into a STEM Scopes curricula at the seventh and eighth grade when there are other programs that meet the same requirements that we were looking for that, um, can be rolled out a little easier.
STEM Scopes tends to be a very scripted program. It's like they have a path that you follow for the lessons. And it's a good path. I mean, there's nothing wrong with it, but it is very, if you wanna implement this fully, you have to sort of buy into their entire philosophy. And it would take a lot of getting up to speed with, okay, what's this entirely new thing we're gonna do? And where can we already fit in the good things that we do and how can we tailor it to our students specifically? So, there were some issues with the STEM Scopes, moving it to middle school that overall the teachers and myself were, if there's a better idea, let's go with the better idea. As opposed to saying, well, let's just keep it a contiguous scenario. We're not in the same building even. So, you know, if it was, we were in the same building and I had oversight over six, seven, eight, it would be, say, okay, we probably should maybe be on the same thing, but we would've taken it all at the same time. They would've all moved at once. Whereas now, having two different programs, as long as they're meeting the frameworks-
That's what I was gonna say. I think that's, at the end of the day, the, the stretch, I don't catch stretch, but the, the change, the ma- the significant change for the middle school is moving to an integrated model. Right? It's, cause, you know, somebody's very, very well aware of physical science. That's what they know. They know it well. But our concern has been, well, if a kid enters the district and misses that whole thing on physical science and they're held responsible for that information, if the standards are set up in an integrated way. So, I think when we decided to go in this direction to support this request, it was the consistency of having an integrated model, regardless of what the actual curriculum was, was what drove us in this direction. And so, when we looked at, at what they're talking about is, since this is similar-ish to what they already do, now they're gonna take the, their program and integrate it. So, that's, that in and of itself is a lot of work that they, that they haven't been doing, right? So, that's why, you know, we weighed all of those things and said, it's really not about the program. It's really about the approach to teaching science. it's really about the approach to teaching science.
And I think it would be a different story if there wasn't a program such as what these modules are. So that was kind of, when I realized what the, what the different types of Elevate science are, there were really three types of like Elevate from this publisher, from Pearson. The first is kind of just the standalone subject. You get your fat textbook, it's your life science textbook, it's your earth science textbook, it's your physical science textbook. That would be great for what the model that we're currently doing, but it doesn't work with an integrated model. They also have an integrated textbook. So you would get a sixth-grade textbook, a seventh-grade textbook, and an eighth-grade textbook. But that won't work across two buildings with a sixth-grade that already has a program that they're comfortable and really like using. So then I researched what these modules were, which are really some of those, the units within those integrated textbooks broken out. So then it gives the teachers and the teams flexibility to figure out, okay, this module, the, what do you guys have in front of you? Earth Systems, right? So the Earth Systems module, where is that going to fit within our middle school, sixth through eighth? And we can then just take the physical class set of that and put it in seventh grade, we can put it in eighth grade, we can give it to Monica to use as a supplement for her STEM Scopes curriculum. Like, it gives us the flexibility to make sure that we're setting up our curricula, not because that's what the publisher said was chapter one and chapter two, but what works best for us.
And the kids get assigned digitally whatever the teachers are offering. So if this teacher is offering, you know, this, and then some life science, some physical science, some engineering, the kids in that class are pushed out those modules, so you don't have to worry about, well, are the kids not going to have access to? They get access to everything.
Also, teaching kids how to use a textbook, right? Because there's not a lot of textbooks at the elementary, right? And it's all very inquiry-based at all levels. But you can see when it's set up, and the textbook is set up in a way that I think helps kids make that transition to really, how do you use a textbook as a reference?
But this Elevate does have a K to six.
It does.
So when we were going back and looking at the STEM Scopes, was this?
It wasn't, because there were already some, a few other programs rolling as far as the research when I came in. So the two that we have looked at closely were No Adam and STEM Scopes.
Julie was in, No Adam.
Yeah.
Julie is actually implementing that where she is now.
I mean, I was, I was definitely pleased with the STEM Scopes when you gave us the access and looking at, I mean, not being a teacher, but I thought it was, as a parent, I thought it was very helpful and it looked like a exciting program. But I'm just wondering how people will respond to, well, we just got a new curriculum, K to six for science, now we're getting a new in middle school, but it's not the same one.
Yep.
Well, same thing with math. We did the same thing with math.
I know, but if you, oh, I thought.
I mean, maybe people have their opinions about it, but it's not.
Yeah, there were a lot of opinions. I mean, I totally respect what you're saying in terms of, you know, what you're seeing this being able to do for the middle school. And I think it's great that the teachers took that time to look and see where all the, you know, frameworks were. I totally get that. I'm just saying, that I think is what people will look at. I'm not saying that I find this to be, you know, the wrong move. You are the educational experts. I get it. I'm just throwing a note.
Well, we had plenty of conversations about this.
Yeah.
That we haven't talked about.
Yeah. And I, I think I would have been, I would share your, or anyone's reluctance if there wasn't the opportunity for the teachers to have the time to plan and really make sure that we are, we are hitting all of our required standards and requirements between whatever programs we use. You know, we say it all the time, that like, your, your program is not your curricula, right? It is something that can help you get to where you need to go. And thankfully, to the, to the research and the feedback from, from our teachers, I feel confident knowing that if this is in our seventh and eighth-grade students' hands, and if STEM Scopes is in our K to five students' hands, that we are doing that. We are using the program to meet the needs of the curricula.
Right. Well, because I was going to say that, like, wearing my teacher hat, we teach standards. We don't teach programs. The program is the tool, as you mentioned. But I guess, again, I was a little concerned with the six through eight we already bought. So from a school committee hat, the financial impact of, like, buying sixth-grade new curriculum two years in a row, but that's not necessarily.
Right. Yeah, Monica's primary curriculum would still be STEM Scopes, which are now, if you remember when the vertical teams came, which, starting July 1st, when we're making the switch over, will be fully aligned to the Massachusetts standards as well, through that 3D model. So we're going to be fully aligned to Massachusetts, really, K to eight when this new seventh, eighth, or tenth comes up.
And just out of curiosity, where are our scores for Science MCAS?
So last year's scores saw, no, I'm getting my ears mixed up. We saw a big jump. I know Mr. Lucia was really proud of the scores his last year, because it was a big professional learning goal for the middle school, to get science scores up in his last year. This year's scores, which would be 2018's scores, were around the state average when, and that was at the same time that they moved over to the new.
Right, it's a new assessment system. So it's hard to.
Right, so hard to compare.
If you looked at the state average, everything just went.
That's right.
Right. But I, I think that if we're doing an integrated program, that's going to make that easier. Because then, then you're going to be fairly assured that on an every-year basis, kids are getting access to the standards in all of the major areas.
And sort of what the state is looking for in terms of science skills, reading level, abilities for critical thinking and things along those lines, this program meets it far, far better than anything we have now. So the teachers are trying to pull from all over the place. And this one, for example, has like a huge library that they can access, including external links of videos for kids who are more visual learners and things. So there's a lot of support for the students in this program that we currently don't have. STEM Scopes has some of it, you know, this program has others of it.
Yeah, I thought STEM Scopes had great support too. That's very helpful for those visual learners.
And not that it was a deciding factor in any stretch of the imagination, but this publisher is the same company that puts together our standardized test.
Yeah.
So when we're talking about, just on a practical sense, when you're, when you're giving an assessment, it might use similar language or similar styles of questions. So something might not look as foreign to students.
And our teachers didn't look at that. They looked at the online assessment questions. They went, these look exactly like what we've seen on the MCAS. So it's not, it's not a make or break factor, but yes, that is something. If you're trying to get these kids used to that.
Used to the same language that they would be seeing.
Right. What types of diagrams are you using? How do you frame questions? Things like that. It's that, just a little extra icing on the cupcake.
And it sounds like it definitely will be more hands-on activities in the classroom, which in science, that definitely helps key, yeah, to actually physically do it.
So how long?
Here we go to the budget.
Is, sorry, it's.
To the budget.
I guess one is more of a curious question. Now that we're moving more the one-to-one, the technology piece, are we seeing, which way is the price of a curriculum like this moving? Because I know the fallacy was, we're going to go one-to-one, we're never going to buy a textbook, and prices are going to go down. Is there, I mean, are they, how do prices compare if you went five years ago, whatever that number is?
So this, it's different. Every publisher or company has its own separate model for student licensing. STEM Scopes, for instance, is year-to-year, so that license cost comes up every year, then, and that's kind of what it is. But that cost for individual student license is relatively low. This quote, they have a six-year digital licensing. So that's why that quote is a little larger than what, if we were to present STEM Scopes, I think I had the numbers, it was, it would have been like an $11,000 quote, but that would be for one year, plus some materials for students. So you, you cost that out over however many years, and you're going to meet the same thing. So I think regardless of how your model is for student licenses, it's around the same from company to company. When you compare it to textbooks, you can obviously stretch the life of a textbook as far as you want, as far as you want. So.
Talk about it.
Whereas, one of the downfalls to a digital license is, if you don't submit that PO, it's gone, it's gone. And then you lose that license, or it expires. So it does put us a little bit more on someone else's clock to say, okay, we have six years with this license, we got to make sure that when that six years comes up, we can't stretch that digital license another year or two. We have to make sure that we're supporting it when that time comes. So, but the benefit of it is, as Cerise mentioned, it's digital. So if things change, if they want to mix things, if they want to change things up, if they find a little, you know, typo or glitch or whatever, they fix it, and then you've got the most updated version.
And they seem very, the company overall seems extremely eager to get feedback from people who use the program. Their customer support is extremely right on. You have a question, you're coming right back, and they want to hear about it. So my guess is, as people use it, you know, suggestions will come in, how can we better tailor it for, you know, whether it's California, Massachusetts, et cetera. And with Massachusetts, you never know what they're going to do with the frameworks. I mean, it could be four years from now, they go, oh, by the way.
That's what I'm saying. Do you have to do a six-year? Is that, or can you select the amount of years?
I think it was one, three, and six.
Okay.
That's what I was curious about.
Let's hope their support is just as good after we purchase it.
I don't have any doubt.
No, they're, yeah.
We got to be lucky with people. The local rep lives in North Andover, so we can track them down.
Oh, yeah.
You know where you live.
So, yeah, we're happy to answer any other questions that you have now, but I'm sure that you're probably going to want to, you know, dive in and explore some things. I have a link that I will send you all for a generic login to their Realize online component. So I'll send you all instructions for how to log into that, and you can kind of plunk around. And that's really great, because, you know, you might have one module textbook in front of you, but this will give you a look at every, everything that's in that curricula from sixth through eighth grade.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So if anybody wants to take any of these with them or whatever, you can just, or we can just leave them in the office if anybody wants to come and borrow them, so we know where they are.
You can drop an email anytime with questions or anything along those lines. Happy to answer anything.
One more money question. In, so this all expires in six years theoretically. Is the expectation, six years is a long time, everything changes, I totally get it. Is the expectation that six years from now, we would have to buy another one of these? Is that a realistic?
Another one of the.
Another license and.
Yeah.
So it's a $5,000 a year round numbers.
Yeah. And I'm sure they have some type of price break royalty discount. You sign on for so many X years, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, that's kind of what we're doing year-to-year with STEM Scopes currently.
The publishing companies seem to be trying to, even in the high school, every time you try just to sort of browse curriculum, the digital model, limited-term license, this is what they're all sort of pushing.
So you can't use the same textbook for 30 years.
Right.
Anymore.
They figured that out.
Yep. Technology doesn't always make our lives better.
Just more expensive.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, you guys can look at this, you can look at the link, and then on the 27th.
Yeah.
We'll think about it.
That'd be great.
That'll give, that'll give them enough time to order the materials, so they can be in and get them, that is approved.
Perfect.
Excellent.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight.
Appreciate you so much for having us.
Colin, you're staying.
Well, so I know you always go to the graduation, but wasn't it so nice to see you surrounded by so many people?
Being an introvert, people sometimes is an issue, but no, it was a lovely, lovely ceremony. I mean, it was lovely, it was appropriate, and what I've heard from the kids was, they were, they had a nice time.
Yes.
You could tell they had a nice time.
It was, it was a beautiful day too. But I thought it was awesome seeing so many people.
It's not stuffy. I like that. I don't like stuffy graduations.
No, me neither. It wasn't stuffy.
No, no.
No, I don't think our graduation were ever stuffy.
No one did a flip off the stage.
No, that's true.
That's great.
Maybe next year.
No, don't give anybody any ideas.
Yeah, like I said, I can already think of some juniors who would be more than happy to apply.
I did appreciate the diploma toss at the end. That was a nice.
Like, we don't take them back.
I'm thinking maybe it was a mistake.
Thank you, Cerise.
Yeah.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Paul.
Have a good night. Colin's going to do PD.
Oh, more.
He's back.
Yeah, so I am here to propose, present the professional development plan for next year. So you have two things in your packet. Again, another little explainer for kind of the process that we went through before. I get in on that. I would like to, to thank everyone who served on our new professional development committee. Just going to quickly run through Deb DeFrusio, Martha Dodge, Kate Donlin, Jen Doyle, Mary Ann Fravel, Amanda Harding, Meg Johnson, Tim Larson, Liz Marquetti, Amy Wall, and our buddy Jack Tiano back there. I want to thank everybody, whether they came to one meeting or they were there for, for single one, for their input, for their help on planning for professional development for next year. I think we have a really solid plan in place. A few things that still need to be sorted out in terms of the fine details, but I think we have a really good plan in terms of the broad strokes. So just real quickly, how we determined a district, a district theme for professional development for next year. While I was putting this together, I got to thinking that this, so next year will be my fourth year in the district, and it's really the first year where professional development has really kind of been wide open in terms of what we could do and where we could go, right? We've had a lot of initiatives and rollouts in the last few years where we kind of had to do professional development in those things, otherwise we would have been, you know, really up the creek. So like, technology integration, we had to do things before we went one-to-one. We had NEASK, so we have to put a self-study together. We rolled out Second Step. We rolled out STEM Scopes. We rolled out Project Lead the Way. We had, you know, goals for writing, so we had to bring in keys to literacy. We were launching PBIS, so we had to make sure that that was really, you know, taken care of. I couldn't really think of, aside from a few small curricular things for next year, science in the middle school being one of them, where we had real big initiatives that we really have to focus PD on. So that kind of allowed the admin team to have some good discussions on what do we want the focus of PD to be on that's really going to give us the best bang for our buck. And what we, what we really decided on after looking at all of the data, after looking at the subgroups, after doing some instructional rounds, after just talking as administrators about what we were seeing in all of the schools, we came to the conclusion that the idea of inclusive practices would really be the best fit for professional development for next year. So just really quickly, in your packet, I've given you the introduction to a DESI guidebook on inclusive practices. In a nutshell, what inclusive practices are is making sure that every student is taken care of in every single class throughout your school day. It deals with three main kind of pillars, the first being universal design for learning, the second being positive behavior intervention and supports, and the third being social emotional learning. So two of those three should sound very familiar to the committee, right? PBIS, which we're currently rolling with in Penbrook, and SEL, which we've had squads at the, at the middle high school, we have Second Step at Penbrook. So for those two things, we focused, okay, that's great, we have the ball rolling in that regard. We want to make sure that we're continuing the work in professional development for those two areas. Universal Design for Learning, UDL, is kind of the newer, newish term that is really in fashion for education these days. And the, the idea of universal design, I think the best analogy that I've seen for it is thinking about it when it comes to universal design for architecture, right? We have, when a new building gets built, you obviously have your plans and your stairways and your entrances and your exits, but there are things in place so that anyone can have access to all parts of that building, right? So you don't just have stairs that go into the front entrance, you might have a ramp or some other way that someone can enter that building. To get to the second floor, you might have a staircase, you might have an escalator, you might have an elevator, so that everyone has the option to get to that floor the best way that fits their needs, right? So that's really the idea behind universal design, is you want to provide as many options as possible for someone to meet their goal. And the same applies when it comes to education and for learning, right? We can think of it in the way that we put our classes together, and that we plan our lessons, and that we collaborate with our peers, that we differentiate, and we might modify or accommodate some things, so that every student can meet the goals of the objective of the lesson, or the standard that we're, that we're, that we're working on, whatever that may be. We're giving the options so that everyone can access and achieve the curriculum. A lot of times when people think of, right, inclusive practices, they immediately jump to, well, then we're talking about inclusion, and that strikes up ideas of, well, then we're specifically talking about some special education students or some students that need specific programs. And that's not really the case when it comes to this definition of inclusive practices. So I just want to kind of say that, because the goal for the district should not just, it should be to meet the needs of all students, right? So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of inclusive practices. You're welcome to read the intro of this, or look at like the 150-page guidebook, if you really want to, really want to get into it. So that was kind of the, the admin team's kind of goal. And then it came time for, okay, well, what does that look like when it comes to professional And then it came time for, okay, well, what does that look like when it comes to professional development? Unfortunately, I was able to pull together a lot of, a great team for the professional development committee. We started meeting late winter, early spring. We met every other week for about three or four months to talk about and get their input on, here's what this district goal is going to be for next year, what's going to work best for, for you all. And I was happy that we had representation from lots of different constituencies of our faculty so we could get their input. And at our first meeting, we set some goals for what we wanted this committee to be able to do and what some of the outcomes were. So the first was create a draft PD calendar to present to the school committee, so check. We wanted, they wanted to create professional development opportunities where staff members can learn and share ideas from each other. There was a real emphasis from that team about leveraging the expertise that we have in district.
Providing a culture we've been working on.
Yeah, exactly. We had a great kind of snapshot of that for one of our, the SEL PD day at the middle high school this year where teachers rotated to different sessions for, that were presented by people in the PD squad or the SEL squad, which is great. The idea of providing professional development opportunities with options and choices so that, so that staff members didn't feel that they were, they always had to go exactly where they were told to go, that they wanted some autonomy and some options of what would work best for them in terms of their learning. Wanted to target the specific needs of the faculty. And lastly, to create PD agendas that allowed time to digest, to digest the new learning and/or plan for implementation. That was something that would come up over and over again was, we might have attended this workshop, but I could have used just a half hour or an hour at the end of that day to take all of that stuff that I had rattling around in my brain that was all great learning and figure out how that fit into my next week's lesson plans or figure out how I could implement that into an upcoming unit of study or just look at that material for a little longer to see how it fits with me and my students. So to build in that time to just digest, and the phrase we used was kind of make it and take it, right? So that was the goal and we spent a lot of time kind of looking at all of the PD days that we had on our calendar for next year and just trying to make sure that we mapped out something that adhered to the district goal of inclusive practices, but also met all of those other goals as well. I can quickly take you through each day if that is something that you'd like me to do or just answer questions in general.
Did you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah, I don't think you have to go through every day.
Pretty clear.
Two questions. One, and this might be a question for Principal Richards, is I know there was a reluctance in the past. We did PBIS at Penbrook and there was a reluctance to bring it beyond Penbrook.
Yeah.
Is that still the case?
No. We just talked about that today.
Yeah, I'll look at either of you. So we've started to have that conversation in some of our admin meetings and I think, we've started to have that conversation in some of our admin meetings.
We start to have the conversations at our admin meetings. What we want to do is we want to make sure we have a full rollout prepared before we step into something, especially this time of year. So at this time, no, are we talking about it? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, whether it's PBIS or something else, like we were talking today, actually, with Veronica Schaefer, because who's been a teacher at the school for a long time. And she was talking about how the, what respect, responsibility, and community. She was talking about how that philosophy came out of the Kiev work. And when Kiev was like really embraced by the entire faculty, remember, there's only three people left on the faculty that were part of that original Kiev rollout. You know, people really deeply believed in that model. And so what they did is they used that as their social emotional curriculum, right? It's like PBIS gives you a framework for, you know, a language, a common language. That's what that did for the, for the middle school. And so like when, you know, something was happening with a child, they could say, okay, remember the E, you know, so the kids could call that back. That has dissipated, right? But one of, which I think on the 27th, we'll talk to about something different we're doing in terms of restructuring some personnel responsibilities. But we were talking about tier two support for behavioral students that's not tier three. And so one of the things we were talking about there is, well, what's our tier one? What's the universal thing that we all agree on, right? So that's why it came up today, is we have to be thinking about that when we're mapping this whole process out. You know, what is it that's tier one? What is the common language? And then how do we support it tier two and, and tier three ultimately?
And that at its most basic is kind of what PBIS is all about. It's just setting that, that common expectation, language, and understanding that everything else can then be built off.
And I think the teachers are excited about that opportunity. And I think working with this project we're working on right now, it will sort of drive that discussion in a way that doesn't feel artificial, right? I think we back into it in some ways, in a good way, I think, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's definitely on the radar screen.
And then my other question was, when we were talking with Jisa, is that who's in negotiations?
Jisa.
Part of the conversation, and I'm sure Superintendent brought it up, was, one of their concerns was they kept, their PD was always sort of, I'm going to say, 101 type classes, which I'm sure has been worked into this somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that was a consideration that we took in talking about in the committee meetings was, are we planning things that can be applicable for everyone regardless of what their role in the schools or their work with students might be? So you'll see on here that there are some professional development days where it will be a full faculty, you know, and we wanted to include everyone because that learning is valuable for everyone. There are other days where there's work in what we call JABA-like groups where it could be specific to, you know, you've just taken this learning, now meet with your JABA-like group and really unpack or do some research that we provided for you to make sure that you understand how the bigger picture of that new learning fits within the role that you have within the schools. So we tried to really be cognizant of that. There are also two of the, of the half-days, two of the half-days, I think in the spring, the February 7th and the May 22nd are reserved for, there isn't a clear, we laid out agenda there. We liked having two of those half-days to be more school-specific or, you know, job-specific half-days where, because there's always, there's always things that come up throughout the year. We need to address those needs so we can use those half-days for specific trainings for, you know, certain schools, departments, grade levels, paraprofessionals, whatever it may be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's good.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Colin, are you also going to talk about the book, about the book changes for English?
Oh, I can, yeah. It's just kind of what's in your packet from the packet.
Those are interesting books.
Yeah, so I, I know they, they wanted to...
And that was Ally Viera?
Ally brought that forward with the English department, but I thought Colin could speak to it.
Yeah, so Ally, sorry, let me just pull it up. So I really appreciate Ally and the rest of the BLA department looking at some, changing some books up. And really, the idea of changing those books was to have books be more, more engaging for students, but also that were a little more culturally diverse. And one of the things that came from actually a survey that the SEL squad put together with Principal Richards was not having or not feeling like the curriculum was representative of a diverse population. So we wanted to make sure that we were offering books that, that did just that, that offered different viewpoints, different types of narration, different parts of the world, different types of authors. And I'm happy that it does. We also, I don't think it was in your packet, but based on our...
What was the audit that came in?
The CPR.
The CPR?
Yeah.
The mid-cycle review, we, we adopted one of their templates to, as a kind of a checklist to make sure that it was an inclusive, inclusive text that kind of didn't discriminate against any type of protected class or any type of person. So we put those through the checklist as well. I think Ally gave you a little synopsis of the proposed changes. So I certainly support their wanting to make the, make it more diverse throughout the school. They also changed up a lot of their summer readings as well this year to do the same thing.
Yeah, I know, I saw that. That's good.
It's good. So I, I was on the fence about whether to put it on for a vote. I did put it on for a vote because you generally, you know, if the curriculum changes, you vote, you vote on the curriculum. I wasn't sure if this really constituted a curriculum change, but I put it on there as I don't think it hurts to vote on it just so everybody's on the same page. Because I'm sure there are times when they, there are new books brought in and we aren't going to vote on every single one of them. But I do think it's a good idea for the committee to know when we are...
And I like how she put in that, she added them because of the poetry, which is a very difficult subject to attack.
Yeah.
For most kids. If it doesn't rhyme like Dr. Seuss.
Right. It's not a poem if it doesn't rhyme.
Exactly.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt the changes in the English curriculum that Ally Viera put forward and presented by Colin. All right. Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Colin.
Run.
Wait, Colin.
Stop turning around.
Just kidding.
I think you guys can...
Or stay if you'd like.
Or stay if you like.
We're very entertaining.
She's leaving anyway.
Okay, so now we can do the financial.
Okay, great. Good night, everybody.
Good night, good night.
Okay, Suzanne.
So I've included in your packet just kind of the latest update on the general fund budget for the year end. It looks like, you know, there's a little bit of money left because of the freeze and late special education changes, as I had said last time. So we still do have some payroll and food service bad debt, which we won't know until school is out. And so when we met with the superintendent and myself and the Budget and Finance Committee, we talked about maybe some, some things that we might want to purchase if you guys feel it necessary. So a few of those things, so no particular order. The munis requisition software is something, I guess, that's been in the strategic plan for...
This has been in the strategic plan for...
Quite a while, which would allow us to put the purchase orders online. We streamline that process. And, but we need to really get the software so we can train the business office, so we can train the secretaries and figure out how we're going to implement it.
Come into the 21st century.
Yes, definitely. So that was one thing. Curriculum planning, which I know Colin was working on, getting some teachers together. Was it from his vertical teams?
Well, there's a number of, there's a number of teams where the curriculum is changing. There, there's a new unit that they have to develop or they have to replace it with something. So what he wants to do, he put it out to the teachers, you know, if your group wants to come in and actually wants to work a day or two this summer to actually do the curriculum.
The last week of June.
I mean, sorry, before the summer.
Has to be the last week of June.
It was the last week in June, so right after school gets out.
Right.
They could make a proposal to him. And, you know, I sat in with the fifth grade teachers at a grade level meeting the other day and they were talking about what they had, what they were planning to do. And at the middle school, there are some people who are doing some changing of some curriculum too. So they, or the England, no, the history department, Rick Hastings at the high school, they're doing some, something different with their curriculum based on the new standards. So they wanted the opportunity to be able to do some work this summer, so. Nobody's working more than a couple of days, but just to be able to give teachers the opportunity to do that, because there just isn't enough time during the year. As you see, when you see the professional development calendar, you know, we don't want to be giving all of our PD days to having people sit and do curriculum work, right? But it is hard sometimes to find the time for it. One of the whole team can get together. So that's what that money is.
So that's what that is. And then, of course, if we had money to prepay some special education tuition, which we had done previously. And also, a big need at the middle high school is the cafeteria dishwasher, which is not even working right now. And if we don't replace it, we'll end up putting a lot more, you know, just keep band-aiding it.
And we'd like to have it paid for out of like the town's capital fund.
The capital fund, right.
But it does look like, from all indications we have, is that they're not, they're not planning to fund, they might not even plan, be planning to fund next year. So in the meantime, we can't run our operation without having a working dishwasher.
Just keep continuing to try to fix it and it's not, it's getting better.
Bubble gum and duct tape.
Yeah, exactly, basically.
Are there more regulations about, you know, using styrofoam?
That hasn't passed yet, I don't think. It hasn't, because in Andover, there's no styrofoam anywhere. And all the straws, right, it's all like that paper.
So what do they do in the cafeteria, Suzanne? Do you know? Do they use like the recycled?
Yeah, they use these recycled trays.
Which are having to be very expensive.
Mm, but there's no...
Yeah, I know.
There's no styrofoam.
Right.
Yeah. So I don't think the town voted on, I don't think that passed. I think there was discussion, it was a town meeting.
We voted on it necessarily.
I don't even know if it came up for a vote, but I don't think, there wasn't nothing passed.
I don't remember it, I don't remember it passing, but I don't remember the discussion.
Certain towns have passed.
I think they did talk about it, but they didn't...
It didn't actually pass.
Yeah, or it didn't vote yet. It was just kind of still in the discussion mode. So, yeah, well, in the back here, I did mention, so we have been trying to replace some IMAX at the preschool. They have some really old, old computers, the teachers at preschool.
Well, they got hand-me-downs of hand-me-downs.
And they run their smartboards, so, you know, they run into some trouble, you know, trying to get them work. So we thought that it would, this wouldn't affect the budget, but this would, it's just for informational purposes to let you know that we thought we would, we do have a balance in the purely extended day revolving, so it would be replacing four computers, so it's really not, not going to break the bank.
So it's not a recurring expense.
Yeah. So that was really it.
I just want to observe that the number was 74, which is right where you thought it would be.
Yes.
The, also just comment on the food services bad debt.
She did, she did. That sounds very accurate.
The food services bad debt, we did learn that we need to write off the bad debt every year.
Yes.
So we, we can't actually carry, so if there's $1,000 of bad debt from 1819, we can't carry that forward. We have to balance that with school budget money annually. So the good news is that we can't carry bad debt for a long time like we have.
Right.
The bad news is that we have to cover it every year, so we can't kind of fudge it.
So we do have to cover that each year and take it off the food service revolving accounts books.
And then the...
It kind of goes to the, well, we have, well, the general fund will absorb it and it's still our task to try to recoup it, but that, any money we recoup would have to just go directly to the town.
Right. So that's the awkward thing is if we then do openly collect it, it goes to the town, not to us.
Right.
Which I feel like, I know...
But our employee, that's strange because we're the ones collecting it. You would think that they should be charged or paid for.
Well, we did, I did learn that in some, you know, municipalities or towns, they do kind of hand it over to the town. And they, yeah, they have an agreement with the town and sometimes they'll attach people's, you know, light bills, water bills, tax bills with the food service bill from the school.
Oh, really?
Because I was just, that was going to be the, the rest of my question is, I know at some point I had talked about if folks are behind on, on their food services bill or their sports bill or whatever, what the, how we could encourage them to catch up. But if they could attach it that way, that's actually an interesting thing. But it's still not a responsibility, I guess, once we pay off the bad debt, it's not really a responsibility slash benefit anymore, but it's, it's worth.
It's, yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
So if you guys want to talk about the...
Those were...
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Okay. Any other questions on that? No, the dishwasher needs to be replaced.
Sure you do.
Yeah.
I'm going to take a vote on this.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve, to spend funds, to approve the plan to spend funds at the end of the year on the items that were identified by administration.
Can I ask a question about that? Are we, and maybe it's semantics, but do we then need to vote for the line item changes? Or are we really approving the line item changes? What is this vote actually, like, what is the, what is the actual vote? Are we voting to approve these four items?
Well, because these weren't really in your original budget for the, for the, for the year. So you're really approving to, hey, spend what's left in your, in your budget this year.
So then are we... So then are we, next time gonna vote on line item transfers?
Well, next, next time, well, probably not next time, but the, you will, I will have the line item transfers.
So it's a two part.
Two part.
Two part.
Yeah, so we just wanted to.
Yeah.
A, you know, the balance, B, make a recommendation, if, if, if this ends up the year the way that we, that we need, this would be what we'd recommend. If you say yes to that, then we would move the money into the right accounts and, and let, and you would vote on that.
And is the, the s- special ed prepayment sort of the plug of what's?
Yes, that's the last thing.
That's what I would plan to do, yeah.
Thank you.
So, sorry.
And I can update you with that later.
That's a good process question, that's important.
Plays out.
So I made a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then the second thing I have here is something that's kind of been long overdue as well, is the four oh three B administrative contract. We were part of a group bid with Needham back in the early fall. Um, they had, uh, picked a, a group and then what happened was, um, they started, they implemented that and I was just ready to implement that plan. And something happened where they sold it to another group, so, which wasn't in the original bid, so Needham kinda put a halt on everything. They had to rebid it and, and this was the group that actually bought out the original group that they had chosen. Um, so they did get chosen, but we had to wait until all the paperwork got settled, so, um.
So it's TSA?
Yes, so it's TSA Consulting Group, um, you know, there is a fee for this service that we had discussed. Um, and, you know, this is something that the IRS, um, really mandates us to do, requires us to do that we haven't.
These are my favorite kinds of votes.
Yeah.
So, I know, right, it's like, who's gonna say no?
So, so it really, once we get all the paperwork signed, then I can implement it as of July first and we'll send out all the information to the employees. So they'll know, you know, they, they really don't have to do anything, they're still gonna have their four oh three B and it's more of a, an administrative process and with the town as well. How she'll send the money in and, and they're overseeing and making sure that, you know, we're taking care of the employees' money, basically.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the contract with TSA Consulting Group, Inc. to provide third party administration for current employees. Enrolled in a four oh three B plan for a cost of twenty-two fifty per employee with eighty-three participating.
Eighty-three, yeah.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you Suzanne. Thank you. Um, okay, now we're gonna talk about. Preschool fees. Saw this coming.
Yes, so this is another. So we did, had discussed again in, uh, several meetings about increasing the tuition, not that we want to, but we've just. There's a need to in order to be able to cover our expenses with the preschool, with our declining enrollment. Um, the director did ask me if I could round them to the, the dollar, so I did do that for her, cause she says that it's very difficult for the parents to remember. When, you know, when this changed, so that's why everything's rounded.
I'm sure that's actually true.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
She put in a special request, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Sure you guys were fully engaged in this.
Yeah, I was just trying to remember when I was reading it, this sheet, the last one from our last meeting, did this include the, the increase? It did reflect the increase, okay.
It did, and we're, and we're still, we're still needing, we're still needing to make sure we fill the slots that we're opening up.
Right, and we have had some updates, but they're, um.
They're still short.
What do we have right now, what's?
Uh, in the six.
We're at sixty-six students as of two weeks ago.
Yeah, and I believe it's up to seventy-three paying students.
That's good, cause, because we, we, we sat down and we worked on how many, uh, full day slots, how many two days, how many three days. And unfortunately, you know, we, we tried to keep the class size to like twenty or below. But in order to get to the place where, you know, we could break even, uh, we had to increase that to twenty-two. So, you know, we'll see if we get that number of students.
Well, even if, even if we're full, we are still anticipating a deficit though.
Yep.
So even if we fill every, every possible slot, right.
Yeah, I think it was a ten thousand dollars, I think, yeah, because it's, you know, you have to have a lot of.
It's all depends on what.
Three hundred, three hundred dollar slots, right, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a def- it's a pretty big deficit.
It is.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do for a deficit? What are you gonna do with a deficit?
Well, I mean, we, we have a couple, we have a few options, right, we have a few options.
Okay. Okay.
If we, if we can get it to ten thousand, we have a few options, right.
And budget and finance, you guys have.
Yeah, no, we're all there, right in the loop on that.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and then of course, we have to continue having our conversations about, you know, kinda what are the different situations that we need to, cause we have, whatever we do, we have to do it in plenty of time, so we can give enough notice to people and we have to, you know, have to figure it out.
Fair, um, I'll make a motion to approve the increase in preschool, uh, tuitions for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a, um. Oh, uh, dates for, um, school committee meetings in the summer, so the two dates proposed are July twenty-fifth and Thursday, August twenty-ninth.
That seemed to be what people, yeah, thought everybody could do, so.
It's already on the calendar. And then August twenty-ninth. Yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the dates for the summer school committee meetings as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, we have a donation for, uh, Pearly Second Step Program for the preschool, so. Please accept a donation from, so this is like the, uh, preschool parents group, so that's what they, I, when it's on PTO, okay, so that's what they go by, P- Parent Teacher Organization. So they are donating four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the purch- for the purpose of purchasing the Second Step Program, so that's very nice of them.
Alignment between.
Yeah, that's very nice of them to, um, donate for that, so thank you to the preschool PTO for, um, taking care of that for us. So I will make a motion to accept the donation for the Second Step Program from, for the Pearly Preschool from the Pearly Parent Teacher Organization.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a?
The.
Nursing, the nursing thing.
I don't know if the nurse there, I don't know.
Reading that on my phone was very difficult.
Yes.
You had to hold it sideways, right, and then try to larger.
So does this change, I think the, what I took, does this change, I know we've discussed having the nurse at the preschool. And, and the things that we needed a specific nurse to be able to do, does this change our obligations, for lack of a better word? At the preschool, if we're allowing other people to administer certain medications, or am I totally?
You think there's still some medication that the nurses can only do?
There are, there are, there are certain, like, you know, any of those psychotropic medications or the, or the, you know, like diastat, you know, that kinda stuff. But this is, you know, the more basic medications, so.
Does it lessen the need, I guess?
Yes, it does, yes, it does, and with, you know, two and a half classes there, you know, I, you know, not sure how we're gonna make an adjustment, but. This is just something that the Department of Education has allowed for a while. And the nurses brought it forward, you know, I think maybe in intending to say, well, especially on field trips, it's really, to have to have a nurse on a field trip is really tough. Because then the whole school is without their nurse, right, if it's a, you know, one Sturbridge Village or something for the day. So I think it, there, there's where we'll find it particularly helpful.
That's, do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, we would, because, yeah, I, I would vote on it to say that we're approving the, you're basically saying that we agreed to give the per- to give permission to other staff.
Train other staff.
Train other staff to be able to do this.
Okay.
And do we have, I would, do we have, and I would be curious to look at our trips policy, do, do we have a policy that requires a nurse to go on trips?
No.
No.
It's not, okay.
No, that would often be deter- determined by the need.
Need, right, okay, I was just wondering.
And I mean, there are some children that, you know, their needs are so significant that, but an EpiPen would be something that would be a medication that someone else could give.
Right.
Um, but, you know, if, if there are some students that are very medically fragile, we, we would obviously have a nurse go with them, that's just, um, would be essential, right, depending. But most of the medications that we're talking about here are, you know, being able to administer a Tylenol or, you know, an EpiPen or.
Right, so is it built into any like five oh fours or IEPs to have a nurse?
I'm, I'm sure that if, if it is, then we will adhere to that, it's, this is more your sort of your general, you know.
Trial that comes to the nurse with headache or something, didn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, um, approve, can I say the guidelines by the Mass Department of Public Health?
Well, what do I have there?
In regards to medication administration, we are allowing.
Yeah, I just had to approve the delegation of medications to staff in accordance with guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Maybe you could choose that one if you want.
Wow, that was a mo.
On the last page.
Oh, this is, okay, yeah. Make a motion to approve the delegation of medications to staff in accordance with the guidance from the Department of, uh, Elementary and Secondary Education. Oh my god, I just went from one to the other.
Nasty.
I went to the one, to the bottom below.
You're okay.
You're good. Oh, you're good.
Yeah, and secondary education.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second, uh, questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that's good news, because I think it's.
Yeah, and the nurses initially, I mean, this has been around for a while, and the nurses were very reluctant because they were concerned about the liability, right? So for them to come forward and say, you know what, I think, you know, looking at these guidelines, you know, it does make sense for us to adopt them.
But if it's just like over the common stuff.
Right, and, and, you know, it just gives them if, flexibility in the event that it is something that's very basic, you know, where now it requires a nurse, so.
It's interesting, because even when you sign, like, you know, when you sign off at the beginning of the year, that formant at, at the bottom, it says, do you allow?
Yes.
Do you do it to?
Tylenol?
Yes.
They still call and ask me, you know, like, is it okay to do Tylenol, I'm like, yeah, I did it.
So they must be concerned, I'm just wanna make sure that they're just covering themselves, so that's, that's good, it gives them a little bit of, um.
Am I, can we go back for a second, I'm sorry, I had read this.
What is that?
What we just, I, my interpretation was that it was about EpiPens, not, the application is specific to administer Epinephrine by an auto-injector.
Oh, this is this little guy right here, so this is from, okay, say, say it again.
Which teachers have always been trained to use EpiPens?
As they get trained on it, so every, the beginning of every school year, they are called down, um, into the nurse's office to get trained on EpiPen administration.
So he's just wanting to use just EpiPen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's the way I interpreted it.
It's been going on for a very long time.
Well, you might be right.
Like, yeah, unless I misread it, which is certainly possible.
Well, you might be, you might be right, cause I know EpiPens is something that the nurses have, because that's, that's something that field trips.
Right.
You, often you have to take a, an EpiPen with you.
But the motion still holds, but let's just be clear on.
Yeah.
What it is.
Yeah, well, we'll.
Tylenol or. That it's an EpiPen.
I see what you're saying, up at the top, it's underlined, yeah.
Epinephrine, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good at reading the underlying parts.
Yeah, all right, um, well, I think the motion is fine, I will make sure that it's very clear, you know, before we distribute this to anybody, I think it is EpiPens.
So the teachers sign off on that, like, when they do that little, when they get trained?
Yes.
They sign up that they know how to do it?
Yep, it's not difficult, but it's just covering, it's just covering.
You just have to go and get trained.
Yeah, you have to get the training, and I know the school nurses do, do that every year, they do a training.
I remember we used to have to practice on an orange.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They do the training and they, on that, and they do the training on, um, AEDs.
Oh, yeah, well, I remember being like the last grade level to, to do the training on the same arm. And when I did, I shoved the whole EpiPen right through the.
Cheryl, try that again.
Yeah, you don't pass.
It's a better dance.
Work like that on somebody's leg.
Right, yeah.
So is it my understanding that the safety meeting has changed to tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I almost canceled it.
Yeah.
Because it was written on my calendar twice and I, uh, and I thought, well, I'll just eliminate one of them, because I only have one on my calendar.
Right.
And then I started getting these cancellation notices, like Henry Elshewski, the, meeting decline, I'm like, oh my god, what are they talking about? Then I said to Nancy, do you think I canceled that meeting by accident, she's, well, it's not on your calendar, so it was my fault.
Okay, so it's tomorrow morning.
So it's tomorrow morning, okay.
Are you coming? What, what, which one?
Was I invited by mistake?
No, you said you were, no, you said you were invited by, um, by, um, Lieutenant Hatch.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
He, he, I think he wanted you to talk about.
Did he? Cause I, I mean, I haven't heard.
I don't know, you told, you said that.
Didn't see you on the particular email that I was sent, so I thought maybe, does he think, I don't know, did he accidentally send it to me instead of you?
Oh, I don't know.
I, you go ask me, all I know is.
I thought he wanted to talk to you, I thought he wanted you to.
And, and I, I asked, I sent him an email.
We just have two of us there. No, but wasn't it to talk about those time camps?
Well, nobody ever answered me on that, nobody has ever talked to me about that.
Okay, I just thought, I, I remember you saying, oh, I'm going to the next safety meeting, uh, Lieutenant Hatch invited me, and I'm like, oh, great.
Right, but then, and then I, I think I, I emailed back and I asked him, like, did he want me to present something and I didn't get a response and.
Well, you come if you want Pam.
Yeah, exactly, come if you want. It was the different, the wrong date to begin with.
Just come if you want.
That's okay.
Okay, so, um, do you want to, thank you for last night, for going to that, I did not have it on my calendar, because originally.
Luckily, I think I sent out the original date saying, hey, who's going tonight, and you sent back saying, no, it got canceled, I'm like, thank goodness.
Oh, the shiny change.
But then I didn't put in the new date, and then all of a sudden I saw that, uh, um, the superintendent tweeted and I'm like, oh my goodness, so.
Well, I'm glad you guys brought it up, because I was like, oh yeah, that's like.
Yeah, so thank you for going.
And it was a beautiful, a beautiful celebration, it really was, and I love the fact that now it's at Je- um, Jeff and Maria's.
So tell us who won?
Um, well, let's see, so we know Joe and Sheri Patel.
Tom, do you know all the names?
No. Um, yeah, yeah, I have them right here.
Okay.
Carol mentioned the CPAC would come to tonight's meeting a while ago, so I don't know who may.
Well, you know what, I think there was a confusion, but what I have on my notes here, Tom, is, and of course, you know, you can.
I'll just say thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, but.
It's late.
If you want to have, you know, CPAC come and do, cause I know there's some changes, Tom's wrapping up, you know, maybe on the twenty-seventh, cause we don't have a lot of items on that agenda. We'll have the science curriculum approval, I wanna talk to you about this little, this new position that, I know that I've been working with the schools on. And then, you know, we could have CPAC come.
Approval.
And the, yeah.
So, yeah, I'll be the new, new leader, so I'm retiring, so.
So who are the new leaders?
Well, we'll get into that later, uh, but last night, Mr. Patel, Mrs. Patel, Dana Reimer, Ms. Jenny from Futures, Andrea Morris, Mrs. Schaefer, Ms. Sinclair, and Mrs. McPhail. Were our Shining Star Award winners.
Yeah.
And I'll send you all a summary if you like.
Yeah, that was very.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well deserved.
So, yeah, so it was, uh, it's been a great three years, I'm retiring and, um.
I hope the benefits package is good.
I have, uh, something, what's that?
I hope the benefits package is good.
Yeah, yeah, intrinsic benefits, uh, so I have something I had written up, I'll give to you, uh, but I'll put it in circulation and just kinda summarizes the last three years, how we. You know, stay. uh, you know, established a fundraiser, um, the, the training series, gave scholarships to the kids, connected the CPAC to a larger, statewide CPAC organization, and, uh, so on and so forth.
Did they get the scholarships this year?
Yes.
Okay, cause I didn't, I didn't-
So last year there was offered to eighteen kids, and I think all eighteen got it, and, uh, this year they're also offered to eighteen graduating special ed students, two hundred dollar scholarships, and, uh, last I knew seventeen had, uh, gotten them, that was a couple of weeks ago, so I'm, I'm hoping that the eighteenth,
Yeah.
Got their paperwork in too.
Well, Tom, would you like to come on the twenty seventh, and then you have a little more time to go over that, so, I mean, the committee can read it, but I feel like you've done a lot of work.
Thank you, I think, uh, No, thanks, I'll, maybe I'll come back again, I think the twenty seventh I'll be in Canada.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we get into the summertime and I start juggling travel, so, uh, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Tom, I mean, you, it would give you a little opportunity, I mean, you have done a lot, so it'd be nice to not rush you through, you know, through it.
No, that's fine, um, it, it's been great, it's been a great three years, and, um, um, the, the biggest thing I wanted to do was to, uh, create a structure to pass on to people. I was hoping to do that in two years, uh, but then no one wanted to do it last year, so, uh, it took me three.
Well, that was nice of you to stay on that extra year.
Absolutely.
I, I didn't wanna lose the, uh, uh, you know, the Tricor Trunk Event. And I kinda shopped that around, see who would run it, and there wasn't really any interest, uh, anyone taking it on, so, so I ran it one more year, and, uh, so, so I'm, uh, excited to be, um, you know, with the accomplishments and to be, uh, moving on, so.
Do we know who's going to be taking?
Um, actually, um, so a couple of years ago, we expanded the bylaws to have more positions. I don't have all the names in front of me, but yeah, there was an election, and I'll get those to you, I'll send you an email, uh, of all the names of everybody.
Great, thank you.
I don't wanna leave anybody out.
The, the CPAC did recognize Tom, though, at the Shining Star Award for a leadership award, which was very nice, I think he was surprised.
Nice.
Yeah, I didn't know that was coming, so, yeah.
I don't, I didn't think he knew that was coming, so it was very nice, you know, that, uh, Chantel, um, said, had some very nice comments that I think we're right on in terms of just, you know, the things Tom's brought to the process, so, it's happy to see that.
So it's been great working with you all, and wish you well.
I know, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Love you too.
You too. Good luck in your retirement.
Till the next project, right? Something else comes along to do.
Exactly. Well, good.
Well, thank you, Tom.
So I'll leave these for you guys to, uh,
Okay.
That's great.
But I'll put them in circulation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, uh, three pages, uh,
Okay, so, oh, is it?
It's three copies.
Do we need to make some copies?
Oh, there's three copies, okay.
So if you wanna hide one.
Do I just make copies for the group?
Yeah. That's good.
I'll email it to you. I was actually gonna do that today, but I didn't get to it.
You should be responsible for the copies.
I read it.
Oh, you got a copy, yeah.
Well, well, well stated, well summarized.
Great.
Well, thank you, thank you for all that you've done, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for staying, I'm sorry you had to stay so late.
Thank you.
That's okay.
It's late. Does anyone wanna mention anything about, like, subcommittee reports before we go, I know, um, pretty much budget and finance, we know what's going on.
We talked about our stuff.
We're kinda, kinda quiet lately on subcommittee.
Yeah.
We are meeting with, we are hopefully meeting with income at the end of July.
Yeah, I saw that.
We are working out, meeting with, I should say, we are working out, meeting with income.
That's great. Yeah.
So was that going to be just budget and finance, or is it all of us?
And then?
It wa- we should figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
Cause I'd like to go.
I would go.
If I could.
Just make sure that we have the right people, yeah.
Yeah.
That means the right people, yeah.
It's okay, I won't go.
Or you just have, or you could post it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll go, it's just, right, helpful.
Well, you're gonna post, you're gonna post the meeting, so.
Be posted anyway.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so nothing else is, is going on, right?
We're meeting governance on Monday, and I, we have what's hopefully gonna be the final draft of, um,
Gender equity?
Gender equity policy, and then we'll be presenting it to the school committee.
Good.
And then we'll start work on-
A few other panels, so.
I should probably, I should probably put that on the-
Okay. Um, so with the, Suzanne, with the, s- with the DECA now that, um,
Yeah, we don't need to-
Principal Richards told us, okay, good, so, so that's all set.
Yeah. That's all.
Um, um, cause, uh, Dawn and McFadden, uh, has always, um, told us that we could call her for anything, I know you talked to her a few before about it, just to be of support, you know?
Sure, she will be for a while.
I think he's, he, who was that girl, uh, last year who ran it?
Haley O'Keefe.
Haley O'Keefe is interested in running it, and, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
And, or being a part of it, and I believe there is somebody in Danvers who would be interested in running it. Um, so I don't know if Dan has anybody in mind?
I think he's got a couple people that the school has offered too, but we'll see.
Good. Okay. Um, anybody else have anything? Okay, there's no need for an executive session.
No.
Uh, tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine, uh, twenty-five PM, and we will be back on June, June twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Twenty-
Seven.
Seven.
Soon.
Second, in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.